Good evening. I call the August 22, 2023 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda? Ms. McFadden.
I move that we approve the agenda for the August 22, 2023 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Porter.
I'd like to amend the agenda or make a move to amend the agenda and take 9.2 either out or move it to executive session for the receipt of legal advice.
9.2 is the update or at least time for religious instruction. Am I looking at the right thing?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think that would be appropriate to discuss in executive session.
To receive legal advice, no?
I, we're not receiving legal advice.
Right, this would be in the same topic though. So that's what the motion is, to receive legal advice on that topic.
Okay, are we, I guess my question is, I don't, you're wanting to move 9.2 to executive session?
For the receipt of legal advice.
So you want to add legal advice? I don't know that we can do that if it wasn't published that way 24 hours ahead of time.
If it's the same topic, you can add?
I, I don't know, we do have...
Mr. Chairman of the Board, I do think it could raise some questions as it's down there in open session for us to move it into, for us to move it into executive session. And so I think it would be more appropriate to leave it where it is for now. And, you know, dependent upon what the specific questions are about the proposed policy, you know, I told Mr. Trapp earlier that I can stay for the whole meeting if y'all need me to, and there may be some questions that I can appropriately answer in open session rather than executive session. Now, if we get into, you know, talking about if there are threatened lawsuits and that kind of thing, then we could put that on for executive session in a later meeting. But I think for this evening, the best thing to do is leave it where it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other concern? And I should, I should point out that we do have two board members that are not present, but they will be joining us via telephone. Are they online, do we know?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, is that Ms. Agostini?
Yes, I'm on, and I would second the motion to remove item 9.2 from the agenda.
Okay, there was not a motion made to remove it from the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It was a request to move it to executive session.
Okay.
Which, which we...
Well, I'll make a motion to remove item 9.2 from the agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Ms. Porter? All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Agostini and seconded by Ms. Porter to amend the agenda, or to amend the motion to approve the agenda to remove item 9.2. Is there any discussion amongst the board related to that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Before we move forward with any additional discussions, I would like to, as Ms. Porter just stated, get some, you know, legal answers questioned before we move forward and spend any more time on this discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
I do have one question.
Yes, Ms. Washington.
So are we going, if this is removed from the agenda, are we putting this on the next agenda? What's the, because?
It, it will be on the next agenda, yes. I mean, I appreciate the fact that some people don't want to do this, but it's, it's going to be on the agenda until we address it, so. But we do have a, we do have a motion made and seconded to remove it from the agenda. Is there any other questions related to that?
What was item 9.2, please?
Item 9.2 is a discussion on, perhaps update might be the, on, yes, release time for religious instruction. An update.
Mr. Chair.
Is there, oh, Ms. Porter.
I, I know you stated that some don't want to do this, but I know that originally it was requested to be put in a workshop so that we could have some open discussions and, and whatnot, and, and that may be what you meant to say. I don't know about not wanting to do this at all, but I know that there was interest in putting it in a workshop so that we can have the lengthy discussion, have all questions answered.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure for the record, it's not that we don't want to do it.
Oh, actually, it has been stated in, I have been told by the board members, they just want this to go away, so.
Oh, okay.
But that's...
Mr. Trapp.
Yes, Ms., Ms., or, I'm sorry.
I want to be clear, you just made a statement that you've been told by board members. If you can give clarity on that, because I know personally, you and I have never had a discussion, so I don't want my name grouped with other board members. So if you can just have clarity on that, please.
I, I don't feel that it would be appropriate to say who has had that conversation with me, but it was not you, I do want to point that out.
Well, then that's appropriate to say that it was not me.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't think it would be appropriate to, to call someone out specifically, but that, that, is there any other, any other concerns? There was a motion on the board, Ms. Agostini, I don't know if you can see it or not, but the motion reads to amend the agenda for the August 22, 2023 Regular Board Meeting to remove item 9.2, which is the update, release time for religious instruction.
And I, I can't see the, the board, but thank you.
Okay, well, board members, let's vote as soon as it comes up.
I, I vote in the affirmative.
All right, the vote is three yes, four no, the motion fails. We're back to the original motion to approve the agenda. Is there any other discussion related to the agenda? All right, if we could get that up there. All right, the, is that correct, Ms. McFadden? The vote is six yes, one no, the motion passes. Before we have a motion for executive session, I did overlook something we would like to recognize, Ms. Andrea White, who was our attorney, who spoke to us a moment ago. Want to make sure everyone knows who she is. We will now move to item 3.1, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Chairman Trapp.
Mrs. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the receipt of legal advice regarding apparent appeal, a student appeal, student admission requests into the district's education, adult ed program, employment recommendations and certified releases, breach of contract, and receipt of legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms., Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Washington?
Yes, it's correct.
The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. We will now, we will now enter executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn executive session at 6:52 and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to end executive Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the board? The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Before we continue with the program, I would like to point out that Ms. Angela Nash and Mrs. Lindsay Agostini are joining us via phone tonight. That's why they're not here in person. All right, next we'll have our inspirational moment. We will now move to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I will ask Mrs. Tamika Washington, our board secretary, to introduce tonight's guest.
Thank you, Chairman Trapp. I also just want to ask if I can make a point of personal privilege. I want to just recognize that we do have some former board members from Richland 2. If you would just stand or raise your hand, just want to acknowledge you. Thank you all so much for being here. And I also want to take a point of privilege to recognize that we do have one of our partner executive directors, Alana R. Grant. She's the executive director of the Richland County Public Education Partner. So I want to thank you for being here and also congratulate you on being a South Carolina woman in business. At this time, I would like to bring forth our inspirational moment. We're going to learn about a partnership in services from Dr. Morgan.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Moore and executive staff. I thank you for the opportunity to share tonight, and I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Scott for the instructional lesson, shout out, given at the end of the last board meeting, educating the public on, public on the fact that we do not use the phrase guidance counselors, that we are now called school counselors. We heard you, so we appreciate that. In my role as the district lead school counselor, I get to work with 73 of the hardest working compassionate school counselors. What does a school counselor do? We teach kids how to learn, how to live, and how to work. In spite of the fact that our ratio, that our school counselor to student ratios may be high, especially in elementary, we still work courageously, side by side, with our school social workers, our school nurses, and our school psychologists to ensure that our students have the tools to be purpose-driven. We work collaboratively with our career development facilitators and our college information specialists to prepare students to be future-ready. You may not always see or understand the way we work to support learning, but the evidence is all around us. One example of how we teach kids how to learn and work occurred three weeks ago when I had the privilege of celebrating with Board Chairman Trapp, Board Member Washington, and Board Member Nash, the launch of a unique partnership between our district and the Darla Moore School of Business. To host a number of our students who are interested in pursuing careers in business, they will be given access and exposure to the realities of the studies of, of the study of business as well as the world of business. It is the work of our school counseling personnel that gave these students a seat at a very prestigious table. I want to share a story of a high school student as an example of how we teach our students how to live, both literally and figuratively. This student was on a very negative path. She struggled at home, ran away several times, only to return home more depressed. She had discipline issues at school and was suspended many times. She was a very smart student, was in honors courses, and very outspoken. Her school counselor recognized her potential and gave her the tools to see a different path for her life. She validated and affirmed her when she did not know how to do it for herself. Her counselor convinced her to apply for college. Reluctantly, she did, but not before crumpling her application, stepping on it, and submitting it back to her counselor. Long story short, she was accepted into college, got a work-study job in the admissions office, but being the nosy one, she snuck into her file and read her recommendation letter. So be careful what you write. Her counselor wrote in her letter that this student is so much more than you see. She just needs a place to grow and to shine. And at that moment, she felt seen and heard for the first time, and she had a new will to live and to thrive. Fast forward, after completing undergrad, the student decided she wanted to be a school counselor, to be the change in, in other students' lives like her school counselor was in her life. This was a part of her purpose for being. After finishing her master's degree, the first job she applied for and accepted was to replace her former school counselor who was moving to another district. Talk about a full circle moment. Her counselor made imprints in her life that last even until today. Her counselor's name was Holly Wingard, and I think it's important that I say her name. And the student is the woman you see standing before you tonight. This is why I work with such a sense of urgency, passion, and love. I am passionate about the impact of school counseling because I have lived it. Thank you for letting me share just a little about this work that we get to do every day as school counselors for students in Richland 2. Dr. Morgan, we were going to ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Trapp, before we move further, I know that Mrs. Washington recognized some folks, but I also want to recognize if we have any elective officials here. I did see Representative Ivory Thigpen come in, and if we have any other elective officials, want to recognize them as well.
Just real quick, a little housekeeping thing here, if Mrs. Agostini and Mrs. Nash, if you would, please put your phones on mute when you're not speaking. We're getting a little bit of feedback here. We would appreciate it, thank you. We'll now move on to 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the August 22, 2023 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, if we could get that on the board. All right, does that look correct, Ms. Washington? Mrs. Agostini, if you could make sure you mute your phone while you're not speaking again.
Mr. Trapp, I've been...
Yes, ma'am.
I think that it might be the executive session room. I've been on mute the whole time, and I can hear what you're referring to.
Good. We will check that, thank you. George Ed, have we, have we voted yet? Okay, okay. Mrs. Agostini, could you tell us your vote so we can log it?
I voted yes, I, I did vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
It did appear, thank you.
Okay. I have the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Let's see, 5.2, may I please have a motion regarding the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting? What? Oh, okay. Please ignore that. We will now move to public participation. All right, before we begin, I will, I will remind our speakers that our meetings are screened live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive or vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student and personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. Oh, yes. I left out a very important part. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. In an effort to ensure that everyone signed up has an opportunity to speak in the first session, we would ask that you be mindful of and respect the three-minute limit. Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be Christian Uggro.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Welcome, Dr. Moore. I trust we'll have increased success under your leadership. I am Christian Uggro, a Latin and Greek teacher at Spring Valley. I ask you to oppose the proposal by school ministries or any other organization of release time for religious education. This proposal will have negative legal, logistical, and educational effects. There are many reasons, but three minutes only allow me to skim the surface. I support parents deciding their children's religious education, but we, parents, do have those rights, and we exercise them. Students are also free to profess their religious beliefs in school by joining Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Muslim Students Association, Young Life, Gospel Choir, and others. I'll leave the legal implications to the district's legal advisors, but I do think that we'll be morally responsible if we endorse a program that takes our students away from schools and if something were to happen to them. The logistical consequences are huge. We can't even get students to and from R2I2 on time. Changes in traffic control, metal detectors, and unforeseen circumstances make this even harder this year. Parents struggle dropping and picking students up from school. This initiative would compound the problems we already have. The academic consequences of a release time program are the gravest. This program wants students released from electives, but electives are not disposable courses. Many are essential for success in college, the military, or employment, while languages, ROTC, art, band, culinary arts, creative writing, physics, statistics, psychology, et cetera. Many also give students college credit, which saves them money on tuition. Missing time in these classes, even one hour a week, will hurt our kids more than it will help them. Also, consider the extra workload that this puts on your staff, teachers, and administrators. We're already stretched to breaking point. I know you would hate to see your people moving to districts where instructional time is protected. On Sunday, I heard Mr. Bravick say on a radio show that most mass murderers are public school graduates. I, you, we all see most public school graduates as soldiers, teachers, cooks, hairdressers, doctors, board members. Compare these perspectives and draw your own conclusions. Please oppose this proposal in the interest of your students, their parents, and your faculty and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Max Berg. All right, is Max Berg here? All right, our next speaker will be Edward Hammett.
Hello, everyone. I'm here with my daughter.
Hello.
Jordan Hammett. She is a gifted student and athlete. She applied for the magnet program for sports medicine. She was accepted, and then we received a letter that she would have access to everything the school has to offer. Now we're up against, she's not being offered that. She didn't go there to play sports, but she went there to further her education for what she wanted to do when she graduated. Now, because of that, and we have the letter that was sent, and I highlighted it, stating that she would be eligible for everything that's offered at Westwood. And now she's not having that chance to not even participate in sports. And we all know that sports helps kids in life, social, and everything. I play sports, there's a bunch of people probably play sports. And for me, I feel like it's hurting her, it's not hurting me. You have young girls out there who need something to do, you have kids, period, that need something to do. And just for them to go home and sit around and don't do nothing, don't have nothing to challenge them, I don't feel like that's right.
Hello, I'm Jordan, as my dad already introduced me. But for me, sports is my outlet, it's my way. I go to school all day, I study, I get good grades, I go to sports, I have fun. Sports is where I really get to be social and be myself. And not being able to play my sport at my new school is not going to allow me to be as social with my classmates, have fun at my new school, and just be me. I feel like I'm, I'm only there for school, which, yes, it is very important to be academically successful, but it's also good to have something to do outside that makes you happy. Thank you.
Third time, thank you. Next will be Howard Newsom.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. My name is Howard Newsom. I am a former substitute teacher, now guest teacher now, yes. I was old enough to remember what that was. I'm also here as a teacher at Summit Parkwood Middle School. I'm a pastor, a father, and I'm here to really advocate for the children for the release program. Being there for the last five years, I've seen how there are some children who basically have no hope. They struggle through life, their life as far as with their parents or just at home is a struggle, and school is the only place that they can come. But I really, in my heart, I, I want to make sure to petition for the parents to have a choice to send their kids to a safe place, to learn and reinforce biblical role models and principles, because I've seen firsthand that desperate need for them to have a program like that, because so many of our students need just a light, they need a, an additional positive role model, and a reminder that people love them and God loves them too. And then they have a chance for a better future, to be more productive citizens, because of those influences. They also need to learn how to respect authority. And for a lot of students, that is maybe something they're not getting at home, so I feel this program can also help to give them the better morals to translate into social emotional learning, and to better manage their feelings so that they can treat others better and they can respect authority. I'm always surprised at how many students go out of their way to come see me and remind me of the things that I've done, the biblical principles that I've instilled, or the gospel music that I play. And God has shown me how much that is a powerful impact on them. And so I just want to petition the board and just basically tell you how much a program like this would benefit the students, help out the parents, and what is needed to help them become more productive citizens, not just right now, but in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Don Harrison.
Sorry. Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Moore. I'm here to speak in support of release time. My name is Don Harrison. My wife, Gail, and I've lived in this community for 25 years. We, all three of our kids graduated from Richland II Schools, with the last one in 2017. However, they didn't start there. All three first went to private religious-based elementary school, but we switched to public school because of the choices provided. Two went to Center for Achievement and then to the Law Middle School. The other one went to Two Academy Middle School. They finished at Spring Valley with two unexplorations. They were all involved in sports student government at Spring Valley, with two being student body presidents their respective senior years. All kids performed well. We credit this to having a good religious foundation and parental involvement. Unfortunately, many students don't have these elements that teach good morals. I'd like to quote David Brooks. He's a reporter for Wall Street Journal, an editor for Newsweek and the Atlantic Monthly. The story I'm going to tell is about morals. In a healthy society, a web of institutions, families, schools, religious groups, community organizations, and workplaces helps form people into kind and responsible citizens, the sort of people who show up for one another. But today, we live in a society that's terrible about moral responsibility or formation. Release time will help with moral formation. Results have shown that it can make a difference in the lives of our children and their future. As you know, there are many religious-based schools available locally. Unfortunately, many families can't afford them. The research shows that children from these schools, on average, perform well academically and socially. Religious ed makes a difference and helps with social and emotional learning, self-control, interpersonal skills, instills hope, builds responsibility and character. Richland II already offers many choices for our students, about 35 different magnet schools. Obviously, our school districts value choice. Otherwise, we wouldn't have so many options. So, why not add release time, religious ed, as another choice? We know release time works in other districts in South Carolina and nationally. We also know it's legal. Is there some work to do to get this implemented? Of course, without a doubt. But school ministries is available to help. There are many templates that can be copied, but it will take time. However, as you can see by the attendance here and previous meetings, there are many willing to do what is necessary to make it happen. Please support release time, religious ed, for our Richland II students. Let the students and parents make the choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Marcia Bradbury.
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Dr. Moore. I am here in support of release time education also. Basically, I am here because I've been part of an elementary outreach called Good News Club that is active currently in many of the Richland II elementary schools. It is an after-school program. Again, it is optional. Parents sign up. Every year, we graduate a fifth-grade group of Good News Clubbers up into middle school. And for them to have a continued opportunity to grow as they have been already established, just as was previously mentioned, that foundation gets built upon during the optional or the option during middle and high school to leave the campus. The middle and high school years are the most tumultuous years for all of us as we were growing up. We remember. For that child leaving elementary school, going into middle school, all of a sudden, there's physical change going on. The academia just overflows for all the new teachers and the classmates and the classes and the movement around the school. To have that opportunity once a week to go with a small group, to have that continued mentoring, would be so valuable for that child. And the wonderful thing about the way God works is He's a multiplier. Perhaps 10 would go away for that release time Bible education, but those 10 come back into the school, and those 10 turn around and apply what they have learned to more in the school, and then those turn around and apply. When we think about what we want in our middle and high schoolers, it is a child who is eager to study and learn what he is being taught. It is a child that respects those who are overseeing him in the education that he is endeavoring to have. It is a student that is considerate and kind and dependable. Now, I want you to listen carefully, everyone in here. All scripture is breathed out by God and is profitable for teaching, for correcting, and for reproof, and for training in righteousness, the training in the rightness that we want to see our children, that the man of God, and we can say the young man, the young woman of God, may be complete, equipped for every good work. We need release time. I pray we will have it in Richland II. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Deborah Greenhouse.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Debbie Greenhouse. I'm a pediatrician at Palmetto Pediatrics here in Columbia. I'm also a member of the Richland II Superintendent's Health Advisory Council for longer than I can remember, and the parent of two successful Richland Northeast graduates who received a wonderful education in Richland II schools. I'd like to give you a pediatrician's perspective on the new messaging and interpretation regarding the district attendance policy. I realize that officially, the policy has not changed, but the interpretation and the messaging most definitely has. I also realize that there have been additional messages and videos rolled out in just the past few days, but I want you to know what I'm hearing in my office. Here are a few quotes. These are all from the last few days. "Please don't test him for COVID. He has to go to school, even if he has it." "Can you fill his depression medication? He can't go to a psychiatrist's appointment because he can't miss school." "She's really anxious because all of the kids are coming to school sick." "Can you go ahead and give us a homebound for him? I know that we're going to need it because we can't miss school." "He's going to lose his spot with his counselor because he can't come to the appointments anymore because he can't miss school, and he's done great with his counselor." These are quotes. These are all in the last two days, and these are all Richland II. I could go on and on, but the message is the same. The parents are afraid. The kids are afraid. They're already going to school sick. They're already avoiding testing for COVID and other contagious illnesses. They're missing crucial mental health appointments. They're missing well appointments. They're missing their immunizations. I take care of kids from every single school district in the Midlands. I'm only hearing these things from families in Richland II. I know that the intention is good. I know that children need to attend school as much as possible, but we need to temper that message with the clear message that sick kids should not be in school, and that children with physical or mental health concerns should have those concerns addressed and should be able to keep their appointments. So, please, please rethink the messaging here. Please make the messaging better. Please make the messaging more clear, and please continue to provide the amazing education that my kids received in Richland II and that every child in Richland II today should continue to receive. Thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you for everything that you do for children in Richland II.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jonathan Case.
I'm a preacher, and so my job is to tell people what they already know. So, allow me to do that in two different categories, if I may. The first one is this, that the release time program has said that this is ubiquitous, it can apply to everybody, every religious group, no matter where they are, no matter what they are. The problem with that is, is that there's only one group in our community that can afford to do the release time. The Jewish community, a large part of the Christian community, the Muslim community, the Jehovah's Witnesses, I could go on for a very long time, don't have the wherewithal to replicate this. So, while the release time is saying, "Any group can do this," it's fundamentally flawed. It's not true. Only one group can ultimately do this. And I think as we measure out this conversation and decide what we're going to do to pursue this in the future, please bear in mind that it's always going to be the minorities that are left on the outskirts, that ultimately have no voice, and that are going to be left feeling like they are second-class citizens. The second comment that I want to make is this. We don't live in Lake Wobegon. All of the children are not above average, and all of the teachers are not perfect. However, the school district is about as good as it can be, and it is striving to be as best as can be. To then sublimate what we do and to say that our children are going to be fundamentally better off with this other education that takes place outside of Richland School District is a terrible slight to Richland II. It says we're not doing our job. It says we're not really educating our children fundamentally in the way that they need to proceed. I ask you to please think deeply about this, about what we are saying if we allow our children to go out and release time, what we're saying about the people, the teachers, and the children whom we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jenny Savitz Smith.
Good evening, Chairman Trapp, members of the Board, and Dr. Moore. My name is Dr. Jenny Savitz Smith. I'm a Richland II parent and graduate. As a professional counselor, I've treated children and adolescents' mental health in the community for 23 years. The children and parents I see every day from this district are terrified to miss school to receive treatment. While I understand in the R24U video released this week that you have not created a new attendance policy, I have also spoken with many parents and students who are afraid to get the mental health care that they need. Children need to know that they will receive credit for classes when they seek necessary medical treatment. The uncertainty breeds depression and anxiety, and that leads to suicidality. We are at a point of crisis that only you can help. I have watched the suicidality of our children grow at alarming rates since the COVID-19 pandemic. These children are stressed, and as a result, the suicide attempts and self-harm have increased dramatically. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, youth suicide is a serious public health problem, responsible for more deaths among youth aged 10 to 24 years than any single major medical illness. Psychiatry and therapy for children with mental health issues is not a quick fix. The R24U video, the board policy, and correspondence parents of my patients have had with schools, and the district is confusing, and parents are asked to employ a wait-and-see approach. Parents are told to save medical excuses so that there is a possibility of receiving credit as decided on a case-by-case basis after the fact. I have spoken with parents who are considering the option of homeschooling their children to have the time to get them the mental health care they need. Further isolation from peers and inability to develop social and emotional connections and coping skills will only result in continued mental health decline for these students. A student who is suffering from mental health complications is not able to learn effectively. Making up seat time for attending therapy appointments or medical appointments is punitive and shaming to our most vulnerable students. Parents have been encouraged and then dissuaded from seeking intermittent homebound to protect their students' credit. I understand what a burden managing a large number of students on homebound would be to school and district staff. However, parents are left with little remedy in the need to help their children. I ask that you amend or clarify this policy so that parents and students have a solution while seeking the professional care they need. Please help our families while still meeting state requirements. I meet with children across the state daily, and only Richland II families are more concerned this year than ever before. There is obviously some breakdown in communication.
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Our next speaker is Burnett Gallman.
Thank you. On many levels, aside from the fact that students would be taken away from class, using the evaluative tools of intent versus content, several questions arise. Why is this being brought up again after being defeated several years ago? Why is, who decides what the instruction will consist of? Who will be in charge of the program? What is the true intent of this measure? This, to me, is another imperialistic attempt by fundamental Christian nationalist activists to indoctrinate the minds of our children. I have no doubt that these activists will dominate the instruction and will not give equal time to other religions such as Ifa, Islam, Judaism, Rastafarianism, or many others. In fact, many of these activists openly scorn, ridicule, and disrespect not only other non-Christian religions, but also other Christian religions, denominations that disagree with their doctrines. They are, however, frequently well-financed and have a distinct advantage. Historically, my kidnapped and enslaved African ancestors were controlled by imposing an edited version of Christianity to them. Christianity definitely does not have a monopoly on morality. In fact, racism is common in many Christian churches, and many atrocities have been committed in the name of Christianity. I would never criticize anyone's lifeline, but other religions have provided lifelines as much as Christianity. Would this in-school instruction or indoctrination take the place of Sunday school or church school, or would it provide a potential overdose of religion and create a religious state or theocracy, which America's founding fathers were against doing? I think that churches, synagogues, mosques, and temples are doing a good job with religious instruction. This is dangerously flirting with creating a society based on restrictive, misogynistic races, and toxic patriarchal values. Are we laying the foundation for a South Carolina that mimics The Handmaiden's Tale? The paradox is that many people in favor of this action also oppose the honest teaching of the truthful and accurate history of the experiences of Black people in this country. I would appeal to the Board and to all thinking people to avoid the blatant hypocrisy of this action and to understand that there are other ways of teaching morality. I have participated in rites of passage programs, and our results have been excellent. So, this is not a panacea, and I think that it is wrong-headed. Thank you.
It's on this time. Thank you. This thing's acting up on me, really. Our next speaker will be Eureka Floyd.
Good evening. My name is Eureka P. Floyd. I am a parent of a middle school student here in Richland II. I am also a former high school art teacher. So, I understand what teachers will be going through if this religious instruction, motion, or program goes into effect. In the current climate that all school districts are in, it is already tough for you to find good teachers in the classroom, and this will add another burden on the schools and the principals to fill classrooms with this. the principals to fill classrooms with this extra burden of keeping track of students leaving the school. Many schools already currently track students who are leaving to go get college credits, to go and get their EMTs, certifications, and license and certifications. And our state curriculum standards are college and career-ready. Those students who are leaving to go and get those certifications and credits for college are being college and career-ready. Our state standards do not say college, career, and church-ready. That is not what the school should be about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Susan Brill.
Thank you for allowing the community to comment on time-released religious education. A lot of people here are friends and neighbors, former constituents. It's really hard for me to stand up and say, "You know, the way it was when I was on the school board," but I'm gonna do it. Sorry. It was May 2016, and our board voted against the proposal for time-released religious education. Dr. Scott was on our board, and I know my friend Craig Plank, he was on the board, but I know he did not agree, but he didn't have the votes. And, you know, our concern was we would be opening Pandora's Box. Now, what does that mean, Pandora's Box? That means there are many unknowns. We had many questions. What would be the groups that are asking for permission to take kids away? What would be the safety of our students traveling from school to where? Who would be the teachers? Are they being fingerprinted? Do they have, you know, security clearance? Those things are expensive. A security clearance could be over $200 or $400. Are the church entities paying for all that? Safety is our biggest concern. And then what type of transportation would be provided? Vans, buses? And who's the drivers gonna be? For me, when I was on the school board, the most important thing for me was that each child would go to school and then go home safely. Their safety was on us, was on me, and is on you. So, you know, let's do a program before school, like Mr. Trapp. Chairman Trapp and his wife have a prayer group before school. Or, as Dr. Budan O'Keefe said, "Let's have a program after school for latchkey kids." That would be very useful and very helpful. But during the school day, I don't think so. And then the question is, who is providing these programs? What groups are coming forward? One of the groups that was listed in the newspaper I had never heard of. I didn't know there was such a religious group as the pagan group. And so there may be other groups, and they have a right, if this passes. All these other groups have a right to do that. And, you know, I have a lot of questions about that. And then more importantly, we will be dividing our students by religion. And why do that? Can you imagine in middle school, "Well, I go for the religious program. Well, I don't." I mean, and kids can be so...they have no filter. It would be so personal and so hurtful. Why add another element to their, you know, lack of confidence? Or it just doesn't make sense to me that we need to be doing that. And in public life, there's nothing more divisive than politics and religion. That's why I turn off the TV. The politics now are everywhere we go, cable news.
Miss Brill, I think your time is up.
It is?
Yes, ma'am. I'm afraid it is.
I am so sorry, and I didn't even finish.
I didn't either. I'd got mesmerized by listening to you, and I hadn't noticed myself.
Well, I will send it to you.
That's good, that's good.
I have another great...
Thank you.
Can I say my last sentence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I believe now, as I did in 2016, that religion belongs in our homes and in our places of worship, not in our public schools, because I'm all for religion. It means a lot to me and my personal life with my family and with my children. And so I salute you for thinking that religion is wonderful, because it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Betty Pressley.
Me too. Okay. Good evening to each one of y'all. I'm back, and it's so good to see you. I'm getting to know y'all so well, and I just enjoy seeing you every Tuesday night. This is fun. Okay, is my time started? Oops, already started. Okay. My name is Betty Nell Pressley. My husband John and I are strong, strong supporters of Release Time religious education. We've attended the board meetings, we've heard your questions, and I know you have questions, and I just want to try to answer some of them. I can't answer all of them. If I had an hour, oh, I could so fill you in. Okay, so I want to tell you about this. My husband and I, we've observed a lot of things as we have gone to all of the Release Time groups in South Carolina. Okay, so we've seen, these programs start off small. I mean, small, like two classes in two middle schools. The rest of the school wouldn't even know they had left the school, to tell you the truth. It's small. Often, a partnership is developed with at least two churches very close to the school who allow students to use dedicated classrooms. There are approved buses that are used to transport students, the five- or six-minute trip, no longer than that. That's what we try to keep it, at five or six minutes. The program has its own liability insurance from the time the students leave the school until they return. They are provided with name tags, and there's a record of attendance is maintained in every class. There are two trained Bible teachers and qualified bus drivers for each location. Now, you may ask, okay, so how do you get the names? How do you get the electives? How do you get the programs? How do you put that together? I asked the same question. I thought, "How do you do that?" Well, Release Time classes start a week or so, or maybe two weeks, after the school year begins. After the class schedules, after the study halls, the electives have been set in each child's schedule. I understand there's an app called Parent Square, in which district-wide you communicate between parents and schools. Well, this is a way that other schools use to communicate with parents. They let them know about the program, they give a little definition of it, and then if parents are interested, they say, "I'm interested in hearing more." Then they tell that to the Release Time representative, and that person gets with them, talks with them, gives them the parental consent form. They sign that form. At that time, the parent is informed of other things that happen. The fact that they have to...time spent in RT counts toward attendance. Any work missed in an elective has to be made up. What I want to say before my time is out is we believe that you should feel good about Release Time, because it has a good track record. Twenty-five years of success right here in South Carolina, and we feel like it's a time to just give our students an opportunity to at least experience what others have been doing for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll soon give us five minutes instead of three.
Our next speaker will be Angela Vandelee.
Good evening, Chairman Trapp, members of the board, and Dr. Moore. My name is Angela Vandelee, and I'm a Richland...a parent of a Richland Two student and a daughter of a retired Two teacher and a graduate of Richland Two. With me are a dozen other parents of current Richland Two students, all of whom, like me, are opposed to the Release Time policy that is being lobbied for by one or more religious organizations and community members, most of whom are not parents of current Richland Two students. I want to remind you that earlier this year, U.S. board members identified the following priorities for the district: Safety and security, academic achievement, recruitment and retention, and social and emotional learning. I do not understand how Release Time fits in those priorities, or why a religious organization has basically hijacked the board's time and attention for a topic that was not strategically prioritized by the board. Second, I want to point out a related issue that we parents are concerned about: The policy that limits students' absences to no more than five in a semester class or 10 in a year-long class, even with a doctor's excuse. Many students have the need for regular doctors or mental health professional appointments, which unfortunately is needed more and more these days. And of course, we don't want children to come to school sick with illnesses like the flu or COVID. How can the district have a policy that puts strict limits on absences, even for legitimate medical reasons, and turn right around and set a policy that would allow students to miss school to attend religious instruction classes? Third, I would like to know the qualifications of the teachers of Release Time classes. If these students will receive school credit for the religious instruction, will they be taught by certified teachers? Would the curriculum be submitted and approved by someone in the district, which would require public funding? Will the students be given tests to verify they learned the material? Will the grades for Release Time be included in their high school GPA? I strongly believe that parental oversight and involvement in our children's lives, such as parents reviewing grades and schoolwork, meeting our children's friends and teachers, monitoring their social media, enforcing curfews, et cetera, is extremely important in raising kind, respectful, critical-thinking, successful community members. I just wish the effort that these religious organizations are putting into getting to the children during school hours would be put into educating the parents who are not so involved, so that they will be more positively involved in their own children's lives. In conclusion, we are not opposed to religious instruction before or after school, but we strongly oppose a policy that would allow Release Time during school hours disrupting and taking away from academic classes taught by certified teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker today will be Anthony Brown.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Moore. I've heard a lot of pushback tonight about Release Time. Mostly what I've heard is, "We don't know." What are the Release Time people going to teach our children? Who are they going to be? It's all based on unknowns. Children are gonna be selected by their parents, not by me, not by anyone in this room that's not a parent. The children participating in the program are selected by their parents. Their parents want them to be attending this program to learn. There's no good reason not to approve Release Time. None. You can sit up here and you can say, "Well, we're excluding this group, we're excluding that group." They're welcome to have their own Release Times. They're more than welcome. If the Muslims want to have their version of it, if the Jews want to have their version of it, the Hindu, whoever, they can start their own programs. But there is no good legal reason not to have this program approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Trapp.
Mrs....Dr. Scott.
Just a point of order again. I recognize that Representative Annie McDaniel has joined us. Representative McDaniel, if you stand up and just wave so we'll see who you are. Representative McDaniel, she represents over 7,000 families in our school district, so I want to recognize her, because she's part of Richland Two family as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to voting on items discussed in the executive session. May I please have a motion regarding the student appeal?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the student will attend Blythewood Academy with Family Services and complete the program successfully for 90 days. Then the student may return back to their home school.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Scott, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Student will attend Blythewood Academy with Family Services for 90 days of successful completing the program.
All right, Dr. Scott, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding a student admission request into the district's adult
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Porter.
Yes, I'd like to move that we allow students, numbers one through 11, into the district's adult education program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Porter, does that look correct on the screen?
That's correct.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the employment recommendations and certified releases?
Chairman Trapp.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Very well, no discussion. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the breach of contract?
Mr. Chairman.
And Mrs. Porter.
I move that we approve that admin does not report employee number one to the State Board of Education for the purpose of breach of contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. May I have a motion for other items discussed? May I have a motion for other items discussed in the executive session?
Chairman Trapp.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that the board directs the board chair and the board legal counsel to take the necessary steps to bring conclusion to a grievance filed by a parent of a student last spring.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen?
Correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The board will now vote on items of unfinished business, action requested. The first agenda item in this section is approval for revision of policy IKE, promotion and retention of students. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Dr. Franklin and Mrs. Gregory to address any questions or comments from the board. Since Dr. Franklin is, is injured, um, she can, she can do that from her ch, from her chair.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this policy is an action item tonight. It's a policy that was previously, um, proposed to the board and reviewed by the board. The only recommended change from administration is to add the, um, statement in the policy that references the one-half credit required by students beginning with this ninth grade's, um, class in personal finance.
Um, Dr. Franklin, I do have a question. Um, is this, this, uh, personal finance class, this is part of the KATE completers? Is that correct?
I defer to Mrs. Gregory on that. I'm not sure it's, if it's related to KATE completion.
For, for the ninth grade students, so for instance, if you have someone that is a junior this year or sophomore this year, is this personal finance class, are they, are they able to take this class in order to become a KATE completer? Or are they only able to take it as a freshman?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, board members, a, any other questions? Uh, Ms. Agostini and Mrs. Nash, are y'all still there and do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's see. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of proposed revisions to policy IKE, promotion and retention of students?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. McFadden.
I move that we approve the revisions to policy IKE, promotion and retention of students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any further questions or comments? Is the motion correct on the screen, Mrs. McFadden? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The next agenda item in this section is a proposed policy revision for policy BC, Board Member Conduct. Uh, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you, Chairman Trapp. Uh, the policy revisions stand, we just had one addition, um, per the request of some board members, just to clarify. So we added the language that, um, in the section that says the process for addressing board member violations, number two, it says the board by majority of vote may execute such removal. And so we wanted to just add that.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Saying none, may I please have a motion regarding the proposed revisions to policy BC, Board Member Conduct?
Chairman Trapp.
Uh, Mrs. Washington.
I move that we approve the revisions to the policy BC, Board Member Conduct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any further discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Mrs. Washington? Board members, please vote. The vote is five yes, two no. Uh, the motion carries. Item eight point three. According to policy BJ, the board can select a member to serve as a board legislative contact to the Southland School Board Association and to work with its legislative representatives, both state and federal, as well as other legislative groups. At least once each, each month, the board meeting agenda will include an opportunity for the BLC to report on educational issues pending on the state and federal levels. May I have a motion regarding the selection of the board's legislative contact?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mrs. Nash.
I move that we appoint LaShonda McFadden as the board's legislative contact for the 2023-2024 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mrs. Agostini.
If, if they could please repeat the motion, I got dropped, so I just, I, I didn't hear what the motion was.
Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, is it Mrs. Nash?
I move that we appoint LaShonda McFadden as the board's legislative contact for the 2023-2024 school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Agostini, did, did you get that, that down?
I did. Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome. Is there any further discussion? All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. We will now move to unfinished business, no action requested. First agenda item in this section is an update on the district's capital improvement projects. Dr. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Anderson, who's already at the podium, to provide an update on our capital projects that we currently have going on. Board members, are there any questions or comments that you may have once Mr. Anderson finishes his presentation? Please address them to him.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all being here for our monthly update. Uh, thanks for the audience being here for our update as well. Um, so, oh, never mind, that's the next board agenda item. Um, but I'm hopeful, I'm glad you're here because you get to hear all the good stuff we're doing in the district. And so, uh, um, thank y'all for being here tonight. So as a reminder, real quickly, I'll make this as quick as possible. Uh, we have completed a lot of projects, uh, so far with the 2018 bond referendum. Uh, the $468 million have already, uh, completed many facilities and happy to add, uh, Forest Lake Elementary is with a new drive and roundabout, uh, road was completed, uh, this year. So we're very happy that that's completed. We currently have a lot of projects under construction. Uh, the never-ending project of EL Wright Middle School and Center for Knowledge, uh, we're, we're getting closer and closer toward the end. Uh, so we're excited about that project. Keel should be done any day now, as well as Bookman Road. And so we're, we're super excited that those, those are done. You'll see some more, uh, pictures here in a second, but you can see a lot of work, uh, under, undergoing. We also are about to, we are in the process, and schematic design is what we call it, uh, for these five projects here. Uh, we're moving, about to move into design development phases where we really take the, uh, uh, really take our, uh, our plans and really start making them into reality. So, uh, really looking forward to moving those in those direction. So real quick, some images, I think these are always the fun part to see. Um, last time I was here, uh, the interior work, for example, at CFK was not finished. So in your top picture to the left, that's the completed EL Wright. The bottom picture is CFK. So you can see with the drywalls going up, all the ductwork is in. The big picture shows what it will look like. So for all the neighbors, now every, all the community members that live around there, I promise it's going to be fantastic. Thank you for bearing with us as we continue this project on about 25, 30 acres. Uh, and we've got a huge facility. So thank y'all for bearing with us, but excited we keep moving along there. Uh, Ritz Northeast, if you haven't been to Ritz Northeast, last time I was here, it's still under construction. This is the courtyard of Ritz Northeast High School. Um, it's amazing transformation. Uh, you can see in the picture on the right is the new, uh, cafeteria addition and remodel, uh, the new awning, uh, it's just, uh, tremendous work, uh, that we finally finished, uh, Ritz Northeast. I've been there a couple times already this year, and it's, the, the, the school is still looking phenomenal. The kids are taking great care of it, um, great students. And so we're excited about this project for that community. Joseph Keels, another, uh, fif, 1950's era school that sits on about seven acres. So really don't have the ability to, to redo the school, but you can see the picture on the left is the new courtyard, um, uh, that's really transformed a more active learning space outdoors. You can see the new multipurpose and theater space, as well as the new, uh, uh, indoor, um, art space, music space on the bottom picture on your right. Condor Elementary School, uh, it's scheduled to be done in November. Uh, you can see some of the spaces that have already opened up on the top right, uh, some of the additions for the multipurpose space, as well as the t, a picture of our kitchen space. So we're, we're making progress, should be completed by November. Our Performing Arts Center, which is right behind us here, um, it's moving along with a March completion date. Uh, the new road around was completed right in time for, um, uh, back to, back to school bash, so that was great. I know Ms. Jackie was super excited about that. Uh, we got the new awning up on the end, and you can see the, uh, seats and everything going in. So that's moving along great. We're happy about that project and can't wait to provide more information for our community to start using that, using this space. Bookman Road Elementary, as I mentioned, we're almost done there. Uh, that hallway on the right picture used to be a, a single-loaded, double-loaded corridor. Um, and you can see just what opening that space up has done to that corridor and that space. All the new black is the new drive. You used to have to go around a very small spot, and we had a lot more traffic on, um, on Bookman and, uh, Kelly Mill Road. And so we've got a new drive as well, and that's the new media center in that bottom picture. Killian Elementary School, the big picture is the addition at Killian Mill, Killian. We have four portables that we're getting out of portables into the addition of Kelly Mill, Killian, I'm sorry. Um, and you can see the media center addition, opening it up with a lot more natural light, bright, bright spaces, a very, uh, center of the school at Killian and, and at Bookman. And so it's a great addition for those campuses. Pontiac's under construction in the front. I had someone ask me the other day, said, oh, is Pontiac already finished? Because the front drive was finished. Like, no, you need to ride around at the back. So, uh, there's a lot more to be done, but it's, uh, we're really, uh, you can see the picture in the middle as we, uh, are going, doing a lot of work to build that new, new building in the, in the middle. And you can see the Montessori spot is under heavy demo right now, and so you can see that picture in the bottom. Blythewood Middle, the road, the road part is, is started. Uh, you can see the big image on the left is all the spaces we're touching. Yellow is renovation, blue is addition. And then we've, uh, we're finishing up the road. The new week drive should be done soon, so hopefully that will add a lot more stacking to get off of, uh, off of, uh, length, Longtown Road and, uh, Reimer Pond Road. And then lastly, Spring Valley. Um, the picture on your top left is the old weight room. It's been demoed. Uh, that is a picture of Bates, the expansion of Bates. And you can see, uh, what's been going on at Bates Hall. So an expansion, uh, a new, a lot of new additions there. We're then transform here in October to the new multi, to the new, um, fieldhouse and then the multipurpose room in the spring. So we're basically completed with our camera installation, access controls are underway, all buses, and then all the safety projects. And of course, this picture here is with Sheriff Lott going over our Senegyics program that we're happy to been, if you were a district employee, uh, o, over the last 10 days, your phone has been buzzing like crazy because all of our schools have completed their drills using Senegyics. So that's great. Although of our other capital improvement projects, you can see we have those, some of these are now complete or ongoing. Um, I'll talk a little bit more in a second about, uh, we have to, you know, the supply chain issues still exist, especially with our mechanical things. And so we're, we're, we're still piecemealing those together, but we'll have those complete soon. Uh, the cost, um, cost has settled, but inflation is high. Uh, we just got redid our numbers, uh, this past week. Pre-COVID, we were averaging $245 a square foot. Today, we're averaging $349 a square foot. That's a 40% increase in cost in, in basically two to three years. Uh, and so we are working very hard with our finance department, uh, to ensure that we continue to get our projects done, what we, what we are wanting to do, uh, and, and make sure we can continue to honor that commitment to get those things done for our schools that need those. Um, like I mentioned, we still have a few issues with certain products, but okay. Labor's still okay. Um, and then, uh, other than a few issues here and there, we're still staying on time. And then the big thing here is the last thing, how much we've spent, how much encumbered, how much is our remaining balance? And for the general public, I said this last time, we have, uh, spent $316 million. Um, we've borrowed all of the money, I haven't spent it, and no tax increase, uh, to the public. So very happy, thanks to, uh, our, our board and thanks to the public for, uh, and our finance department for, for doing this for us. And with that, as Dr. Moore mentioned, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
And board, before I open up the floor for questions, I just want to let you know that during my school visits, I've been to EL Wright, Forest Lake, Northeast, Bookman, Pontiac, Blythewood Middle School, and Spring Valley. And I can tell you that our schools are beautiful and they're looking really good. I want to salute and commend our leaders for their creativity and their patience in getting their faculty and staff to understand the need for this construction, but also to work with the construction team. They've come up with some very creative solutions, like at Blythewood Middle School, they have the estates that are out back, better known to maybe some of you as portables, but we don't call them portables. They're the estates. We have cottages also on campuses. Why is that so important? Because we have moved teachers and students out to those, uh, elements, but we want those teachers and students to understand that they are just as important as the people that are in the building. And so if you were to visit, you will see that they have planted flowers out there. Uh, art teachers have made beautiful signs to hang on the cottage doors, and the estate has its own fence around it. It is, it is the best of the situation. In the end, they know that they will have a beautiful campus that is great not only for faculty and staff, but a warm and inviting learning environment for each of our students. So we'll open it up to any questions that you have at this time.
Board members, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Ms. Agostini.
I'm sorry, thank you. I, I have, my question is, I'm looking at this picture of the retention pond in front of Pontiac Elementary. How much water do we expect to get there? Are we really expecting a pond or is it just runoff?
Uh, no, ma'am. The retention ponds, the purpose of those is to, um, basically slow water down for it than to not to go anywhere else. And so, um, it's designed based on county standards. So no, it, it typically will not be, uh, uh, full of water unless we have a heavy downpour. And so there, it's supposed to keep the water and then slowly dissipate the water into the storm drainage system. So, um, if we have, hopefully, we won't have that full, but if we do, we're, we're all in trouble. So, um, but no, uh, that, I hope that answered your question.
Well, it does. I, just the word pond, you know, made me a little nervous. But it's really just more for runoff. It's, we're, we're not expecting to collect water.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions?
All right, thank you all very much, and thank you, Dr. Moore, for making that comment. You're right, their staff has done a tremendous job of bearing with us through the construction. So thank you very much.
All right, the next agenda item in this section is an update on release time for religious instruction. Dr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce Mrs. Nancy Gregory, our chief academic officer, to come and provide an update, uh, to the board on Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce, Mrs. Nancy Gregory, our chief academic officer, to come and provide an update to the board on release time for religious instruction.
Hi, good evening, Chairman, Tribe, Trustees, Dr. Moore. You'll remember at our last board meeting on August 8th, I shared with you the state statute and also research that we had done on release time for religious instruction from across the state. In addition, we recently interviewed personnel at four schools from across the state with release time programs. One high school, two middle school and one elementary school. Schools varied from small rural to large suburban. We asked these schools specifically three questions, or about three questions, that we're going to share the answers with you tonight. Specifically about the workload to implement and maintain release time programs, one. Two, tracking students leaving and re-entering schools. And the third was about any abuse of student participation in release time. So question number one, what is the workload or cost to staff to implement and maintain such a program? All schools interviewed expressed time to implement and maintain the programs were minimal. The two middle schools said it involved about one hour on the front end for scheduling and about 30 minutes per week ongoing, depending on the number of students. They both commented that they would be scheduling students for classes anyway, whether it was for a religious release time or not. The same was expressed at the high school level. However, they said that some time would be needed for entering grades at the high school level. So it's, it's a totally different situation. One principal stated, the program is very easy to maintain due to the partners with whom we work. The private entity does everything. They sign up the students, they keep track of attendance and transportation, which is what we heard consistently from schools. The elementary principal shared that little work time was involved from the staff at his school because the new students were coming out of related arts for release time. He said that it may take 30 minutes on the front end. Schools shared that once the programs start, there is very little involvement in the part of the schools and the programs run smoothly. As for costs, state statute says no public funds can be expended for release time. Note, a school cannot fund a release time program other than de minimis administrative cost per the court. Staff time researching release time for religious instruction or cost for the school board approving a local release time policy would be considered de minimis administrative cost, according to the court. So question number two, who keeps track of the students as they come and go during the school day? In one middle school, it was the attendance clerk. At the other, it was a school receptionist, just as students would come and go for dental appointments or for any other reasons. At the elementary school, it was the teacher. The teachers from the private entity walked the students to and from their classrooms where release time was being held at store. At the high school interviewed, the private entity's teacher coordinated with the front office staff when the students were picked up and returned to the front of the school by bus transportation, provided again by the private entity. Question number three, what is the district's cause to discipline those who abuse the choice? None of the schools interviewed had any instances of abuse of release time. They said students who signed up wanted to participate and they had no experiences with any students' abuse of release time, reminding us again that the parents had signed a registration form or an application form for the students to participate. The statute, the state statute spells it all out, actually. Students will not miss core academic time and will make up missed work, which are conditions for the student's participation in the program. And so there should be no cost. Final considerations as we wrap up, or as I wrap up. Students will miss work in electives, related art classes such as art, music, PE, and are required to make up the work. That's part of the state statute. So whatever implications that has for students and staff. The second consideration I shared with you last time is about scheduling release time during the school day. And some of the issues that that might be because some of the middle schools did not have the exact same elective schedule back to back and so forth. So scheduling, everybody pretty much that we talked to shared that there are some issues and it doesn't always work. We have also been reminded that religious release time is before, after school is not release time. So we were reminded that that is not the case. And then the final one I shared with you last time is being open to all private entities who wish to offer release time religious instruction, regardless of religious affiliation. So that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Board, before we open it up for any questions, just to provide a little more clarity around high school students. Notice that Ms. Gregory said the teacher. It has to be a certified teacher if the students are going to receive credit for that high school class. It cannot be, credit cannot be given if it's not done by a certified teacher. That's first and foremost. And then in addition, parents need to be aware that there are requirements that are not just core classes that students will need if they are to complete their degree and get their high school diploma, and if they're looking at college applications, like the fine art programs, their PE or, or health requirements, as well as any foreign languages that the students are taking. It is a student's responsibility to make up all of that work, not the teacher's responsibility to reteach it because the student missed it.
And Dr. Moore, since we talked earlier today, there is a little bit of clarification about the teacher and the certified. The entity that has, has approached or made a proposal, their teachers are certified, but it is left up to the district and the board to determine those criteria.
Mr. Chair?
Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms., Dr. Scott?
I have a few questions. One, I'll just start where Dr. Moore left off. Certified, what would these teachers be certified in? Ms. Gregory, you just mentioned that they will be certified, but certified in what content?
I, I do not know. I can find out further information for you about that. We have not delved deeply into high school. In our investigation, we've actually found, as we've looked at more schools and dug more deeply into this, that more of the programs are elementary and middle. And that is because of the issues around how this works when it is a high school program.
So, let me make sure I understand. So the organization who want to work with us, they're looking at elementary and middle schools?
I think they primarily talked about middle schools is what you have mentioned. It's what Ms. Presley shared a little bit earlier. And so she was talking about two schools and maybe two classes. And so that's why we have not dug deeply into the high school. And as I've talked to other districts, it is more complicated and the law does say that students can take two elective classes for high school credit.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, I want clarity because I have about four or five questions. Do you want me to ask all four now?
Yeah, I think it'd be best, yeah.
Okay, okay, I want to get clarity on that. Now you mentioned the surveys that you did in the schools where you got this information. Where are those schools?
Those schools are in Clarendon County. We talked to Clarendon County, we talked to Lexington 1, and we talked to Greenville and I think two of the schools were in Greenville.
Okay, are the demographics the same as Richland 2? No.
But in the others we talked to, if you'll remember, I shared, we talked to eight districts and they were from large districts to districts in the Midlands. But I, you know, the districts in the Midlands, none of the ones that we talked to have the exact demographics that we have. You're correct.
Right. So I want something that's going to match the demographics because I don't want apples compared to oranges. I want apples to apples. The other question is, you mentioned that they will not miss core subjects. And I think about many, many teachers contacted me and they may have contacted my colleagues as well. And they shared that what we're seeing is that elective courses don't matter. And when I think back as a teacher, my beginning years as a teacher, I taught an elective course. I taught home economics, which is now family and consumer sciences. That major course, it's life skills, how to balance a checkbook, how to cook, nutritional values and all of that. So what we're saying is that someone in my class can just miss because home ec, family and consumer sciences is not as important as science. And that was one thing that they, they shared with me. My other question is, you said that there's no cost but admin cost to this program. Well, you just mentioned more costs because you have to go back and you have to go and do the research of this. And not only that, when someone talked about the four core values that we set as a board at the beginning of the school year, this was not an urgency. So I'm very concerned that a group can come and can just change the urgency of what we have for 28,000 students. That concerns me because we have to get parental buy-in for this program. If we do this, what if only five parents want to be a part of it? Which would be fine for those five parents, but what about the 28,000 students that we have taken a lot of time to come up with the core values of what we think is important? The other comment that I do want to make is when we're talking about these students, what is going to be in place for students who return? And we're not sure what they're returning back with, that they could have had a traumatic moment. That's going to also cost us because teachers will have to deal with that or admin will have to deal with that as well. So there are many questions that I have and I've had the opportunity to even talk with some of the people who are part of this organization. And I want to say thank you for taking time to talk with me. But I truly believe talking with me is one thing. You need to talk with the 28,000 parents. And I think I've said this before and, and people misquoted me when I said the village. Actually, I'm going to pick on my colleague, former colleague, Craig Plank, if he's still here. Craig, are you still, Craig left? Okay. Craig and I served on this board in 2016 as Susan Barrell mentioned. We voted it down then. Not that I was against it, we just didn't have. No, no, Ms. Betty, we can't do that. We can't do that. But I do appreciate that. Okay, I do appreciate that. But with that, we brought it back, which I'm fine with that. The only concern that I do have is we're trying to bring it at the beginning of a school year where the school has already started. Why can't this be conversation and we get everything in place to move forward next school year? What's the urgency? And as I shared with people before, I'm not totally against it. I think the timing is bad. That's what I'm against. I'm against the timing because we have not had buy-in from our parents, from our teachers, from our students and from the village. Now let me clarify when I say the village, because some people misquoted me. I didn't say village church because I know there are many representation here. So if you're going to quote me, make sure you quote me correctly. I said the village. This is the village that's here and I do appreciate that. But this village does not, and I will say that and you can quote me on this, this village does not represent the entire 28,000 plus students that we have. So I am not going to be moved by an outcry of a few hundreds when we have thousands of students and parents and community members. So I will start right there to allow an opportunity for colleagues and then we may have to just circle back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other board members would like to comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, is that Ms. Nash?
Yes.
Ms. Nash, go ahead.
I would like to say a couple of things. I think the part that we're missing, first I'll address the issue of what our board priorities are. For many people of faith, this is a part of SEL. This is a part of social, emotional and, you know, learning. This is a part of that. It's what helps people get through. It's what helps them cope. And you may have heard, you know, me and my colleagues, we all hear from different people and there are seven of us. And we represent all of those different people who speak. So I'm not discounting anyone who has spoken for or against, but we, none of us can do that. Because even though if we were to do statistically, people who I've spoken to, I've spoken to teachers, I've spoken to students, I've spoken to parents. And the interesting thing is teachers, a lot of teachers don't want to speak up because of the reason why I am looking at this and saying, there has to be a safe space for teachers and students, students as well. Teachers can't even speak up because they're afraid to say anything about this because of the scrutiny that you get. And so again, and I will keep saying it, is that we make safe spaces for everyone, except for people of faith. And the part that we miss, and I'm talking about any religion that wants to come and do this. And to address, you know, we talked about, you know, that this is going to be disenfranchising. It's, we look at the makeup of District 2, the majority of our prominent churches are black and brown, people of color churches. We see them, they're part of our district, they're partners with our district. So that, even that statement, to talk about disenfranchisement, but the greatest disenfranchisement is that of the parents who are, are the ones who would make this decision. It is up to parents. Parents have to decide, parents, not me, not you, parents. And any parent that doesn't want their child to participate can make that decision to not allow their child to, to participate. That is their decision, their decision. And that we could, to disenfranchise parents and to constantly say as if we know more than parents know about their children, that is just not something, that's not our place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Anyone else wish to make, Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I have a few questions. One was, did we look into the court case in 2007 with Moss versus Spartanburg? And of this, the family that saw a flyer for the program and how they took Spartanburg to court for that? Did we consider the costs involved with the legal issues with that?
That's not been part of our research, but.
That it's not been part of our research, but we will certainly look into that court case?
That was one of my, one of my concerns, I have many. But the fact that this took place in 2007 and even though Spartanburg did win that case, there, they went to court. And so as I, I continue to ask questions about what the cost would be and how anyone can file a lawsuit. And this is one other reason why I wanted to have this discussion in executive session, was that should anything go wrong, like a flyer get into, put in someone's car on school grounds? And it's promoting one of these programs and someone chooses to take our school district to court? There is a deductible and we just talked about that recently, that's involved with every single court case. And that is not one of the reasons, what you said about the teachers and their time, how it's, it was a small amount of time. But the deductible is quite large for many of the cases that we deal with in court. So I would love for the public to know that, that it could be that we have to pay 25,000 or more in deductibles for every lawsuit that's brought to Richland School District 2.
In most of the cases, schools and districts we talked to, they handle this generally by having open house or something along those lines where there was a table and parents could pick up a flyer where someone from the private entity was there. Or in the case of Greenville and Ori County, both have, they're very robust sites. They're private entities that provide release time and they are very thorough and they have buttons for every school that shows who's the teacher, the times, the location, very, very thorough. And you can click on a link and get a, a registration form or permission form. And so that's what we're, we've tended to see, but the, the open house is something that is frequently done.
Yeah, it's, it's still very concerning to me. I remember back in 2000, oh, I want to say maybe 2010, when we had a rezoning of a school and one of our elementary schools had to split up. And we had an event at that school at a Sonic. And parents who were against the school district separating that school or building a new elementary school at that time, would go to the, a school event and put flyers in cars against that, the opening of that school and splitting up their neighborhood. So just something like that has happened in the past. I have a real situation in Richland 2 where I feel like. I have a real situation in Richland, too, where I feel like at any moment, if someone is against it, that could get in their hands and cause us money in our taxpayer dollars.
And the state statute is very clear about the private entity handling all, you know, registration, liability, transportation, everything.
Right. And that would be number five of that statute. It says no public funds are expended and no public school personnel are involved in providing the religious instruction. However, if someone sues, chooses to sue us, we would be represented and we, there would be funds expended to represent us in court. So even though that is in the statute, I know for a fact that we would still have to spend money for that and not just a little bit. Also, I listened to different people who had sent emails about how they felt being in this very room and listening to different speakers speak about this event. And, and they made me think about our students who are not represented, our, our minority religions, for lack of better words, and saying that just being in the room, they felt as though because they wouldn't have the resources to be able to create programs like that, that they felt as though they were ostracized or as for some reason that they may be less than because they wouldn't be able to create something like this. And they asked me to think about it as a student, and, and I am thinking about it as a student. And a student who has their friend or realizes their best friend is participating in this program, and even more so now that I know it's elementary and middle, and their friend says, "Join it with me", and they've never had the discussion of their religion. And now they're put in a place where they have to have this discussion. I was even more concerned listening to speakers talk about what the students will do when they come back to the school and spreading it to this, this 10 more and 10 more and 10 more. And, and I thought about the students who, who may have a different religion or a different faith. And it concerns me that we would insert ourselves by, by creating this and causing those issues. So I'm thinking about every single student, not mine, not those that attend my church. I'm thinking about all those students who may not be represented today and may not be able to speak at the podium. I did lose my train of thought. And also I made this point the last time that we met about our teachers and about the students who can't participate, who, who would be, have the decision to participate either in this program or an elective. And if their parent who has spent time advocating for this program now says, "No, you're going to be in this program, and I know you only have one room for an elective, and we've already paid for your band instrument", and then they want to do another elective, but because the parent advocated for this, they're not allowed. It's one less choice. And I know we keep talking about this law. The law states that the school, that the school district board of trustees may adopt a policy. When we adopt the policy, we're making an active choice to do this, which also, those, that wording alone makes me worry about what possible lawsuits can come.
Actually, two-thirds of the districts in the state have policies, I believe. That was the number I was given. But in we, when we were doing research, we found that not all of them have programs. In fact, some of them are our neighbors that we called. And so when we were talking about trying to find somebody like Richland, too, we were reaching out to different districts across the state. Again, when I went on their websites and I saw they had a policy, I went, aha, they have a program. But that was not the case. So sometimes they just adopted the school board policy that was drafted or was shared with the district, and they have it. But again, that does not mean that they have a program that is active in their district.
What it does mean is that we may create a policy for a program that would not be active and a policy that would look as though it's outdated because no one, the attendance has dwindled. And I've even seen members of the community who have been in this room and social media shaming people of their religious choices and how you may not be Christian enough because you don't, that you're not for this organization. And it's very disheartening because one who takes that as an, as a, who looks at it as an intimate thing, as something that is private and not one that you share with the world, it's disheartening to see those who are advocating it and saying all these positive things at the podium and then go on their pages and say such ugly things towards those who don't agree with them. I look at that as you put that in a school system. What are we doing? You're going, you're put, you're going against each other. I would love for this group of advocates to provide something after school. I participated in the NAACP forum recently, and I heard students say over and over, and I want you to know this because it's a need. Our students said, "I can't participate in after-school events because all of them charge us something. My mom can't pay for this event and that event because they all charge something. I have nowhere to go after school, so I'm forced to ride the bus home and stay at home by myself." The kids stated over and over, "There weren't enough programs after school for them." You would be providing so much and possibly even gain more participants by offering it after school and not charging them for, to participate. I would love for an organization to do that and give our students more options after school. That is a great need. We have things that are happening after school and bad things happening within neighborhoods, and it's due to lack of free opportunities for our students. So anybody listening, I encourage you and tell a friend to offer these programs after school. Our kids have said that they needed it, especially in middle school for those who are not the athlete or the band or orchestra student. Thank you.
If I may, Mrs. Porter, I just want to get some clarification because I didn't, I don't know if I followed you. But you said that Spartanburg, Spartanburg School was sued because of a pamphlet or something? And you said that they, they won the lawsuit?
It was Moss versus Spartanburg. Spartanburg won.
Okay, Spartanburg.
And my point was that it still was a cost involved. Because when you kept, you're taken to court, you're going to have to pay the deductible. And we just talked about that recently, about that.
Okay, alright.
But you can ask Ms. Hawkins about it later.
Okay, no, I mean, I would think that when in the, I don't think that we should, I won't comment on that because that's not my turn to comment.
It's something involved with the insurance, I believe. And if I'm incorrect, I apologize, but that, that's my understanding.
So if you, if you win a lawsuit, you still spend money?
No, the lawyers work for free.
That's correct. I mean, even if you win the lawsuit, you don't get to collect money from the plaintiff. I guess that's probably the American rule in the U.S. where, you know, loser still has to pay their attorney's fees. Now as far as the deductible, I don't, I don't know whether or not y'all have an deductible or not. It would be a covered claim, meaning if there is a deductible, once that deductible is paid, then the insurance company would be responsible.
Who is this? Good question.
She, she's our, she's an attorney that works for the board. We, we, she works for the school board. We introduced her in executive session earlier. You're welcome. If I may ask one further question before we leave the subject. So if anyone is to sue the school district in a frivolous way, we still spend money on our attorneys, but we don't, we don't award money to them if we win?
No, if it's a covered claim covered by your liability insurance policy, then you are not paying for the attorneys to defend the district. The insurance company that brings legal counsel to...
Oh.
She's going to come up here?
I'm pretty loud, but for the people that's listening.
Yeah, okay. So if there, if there is a lawsuit, and, and you all know, anybody can file a lawsuit at any time over anything, right? And the Moss case, actually, the group behind that lawsuit was the Freedom From Religion Foundation. Some of you may be familiar with Freedom From Religion. And then there were some parents who actually joined into that particular lawsuit. And the school district did win, and of course, in the court's opinion, they went back to the fact that in the 50s, the United States Supreme Court upheld the constitutionality of release time for religious instruction. So if the district was to be sued over this, we've got, in, in, in legal terms, it's called precedent, right? The precedent of that case to say that our courts, the federal courts in South Carolina and the Fourth Circuit have, have said that this is a constitutional program, right? So if there was a deductible, the district would have to pay that. And again, I don't know if there is or not or how much it is, but beyond that amount of money, the insurance company would be paying whoever is appointed to defend the district in the case.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that is that, that was obviously presented as a deterrent to adopting such a policy, but people could just as easily sue if we didn't adopt a policy and we'd be in the same boat. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yeah. Anybody, again, anybody can sue over anything. And I do want to say that there would be costs, right, if you were sued as far as the deductible. But that does not, those costs that would be associated with defending against a lawsuit, that would not violate the South Carolina Release Time Statute as far as de minimis cost. So there would be a cost, but it wouldn't mean that we were violating the statute, if that makes sense.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted some clarity on that. Does anybody else have a legal question before, Mrs. White says? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Washington?
I just want to say that when I took my oath of office and I'm reminded of what, what I am here to do, I'm not going to lie, I've tossed and turned over this for several nights. My husband is like, "Please get some rest." And I have to share some of the same sentiments that even Ms. Porter shared. You wouldn't believe some of the things that people say, but I'm going to say this. I'm a Christian and I love the Lord, and if I don't vote for this, it does not change my conviction of who I am. It does not make me any less than anybody else sitting in this seat. I will be up at 3:00 a.m. praying and warring for all of the students and the parents in this district, no matter which way we go. I am not a Satanist. I am not against. I am not for. I am the person who represents the interests of the entire district when making a decision, and I have to rely on facts and on my judgment rather than on individuals or special interest groups. That is the oath that I signed in that room in front of all of my constituents and the teachers who have also emailed me, who are for and who are also against the policy, of the parents who have emailed me, who are for and who are against the policy, of the groups who have emailed me, who are for and against the policy. And as your elected official, I have a right to listen to everybody. I don't make a decision for one or two people. I make a decision for what's going to be in the best interest of all of the students in Richland, too. And so when I make my decision and make my vote, I will make it very consciously. I will make it and I will sleep at night, and I will make it and I will continue to serve God. But when I sit here in this chair and I hear elective teachers say, "Ms. Washington, thank you so much for asking for our feedback", because I'm not going to come to a school board meeting because I've got kids to feed or I've got soccer games to go to, so I won't show up here and come to the podium. But I have friends in other districts who say things like, "Hey, the student came in a couple of minutes late", or "I do have to give makeup work. We can sit here and say, but the kids will have to get makeup work." Yes, it is a parent's decision, and God knows, we're not trying to take away anybody's rights. But I think about the church, and I said this before. I think about the church who doesn't have the funding to create a bus, to create the transportation, to be able to do that. How are we going to market and make sure that everybody is represented? And here's the reality. I grew up in this district where there was lots of inequalities. And let me tell you, if one middle school gets it and another one, it won't get my vote. Because it's not fair that one school would get it and the other kids wouldn't have the opportunity. Versus if you do it after school, every child in that building would have an opportunity because you get to select where you want to go. You don't have to like what I'm saying and how I'm saying it, but I am saying this for my conviction for the children and for everybody in this district, whether they voted for me or not. I am not going to sit here and say that this is not about children. That's my number one reason for being in this, in this chair is because I was voted to be in this position for the children of Richland, too. Doesn't mean that I don't like release time. I would love it. My daughter went to Ben Lippin because I love religious education. I would put her back in Ben Lippin if that's what I want her to do. No, every parent does not have access and opportunity, but I support opportunities like FCA. Those children are thriving. They are praying at the schools. And my pastor said to me, "You don't push out the school. You better push in. You better push in. You better push in and pray." When we have prayer, no child does not get shut down if they decide to stand in the middle of their hallway and open their mouths and pray. Let's build our children to be bold in our school systems so that they don't have to feel ashamed or say that they don't have a safe space. When y'all said that, that saddened my heart, and I said, "What kind of environment are we thriving in our schools if children don't feel safe?" And yes, every time we talk about, let me tell y'all this. I was for this. I was like, oh, let's do this. But I had to hear all the voices. I cannot silence voices. I cannot do it. And this is my personal conviction. I'm not speaking for any board member up here. This is my personal conviction. And when I made that conviction, I slept well.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Ms. Trapp?
Yes.
I do have a few more.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I have a few things to say and then I'll let you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Trapp?
Oh, yes, Ms. Agostini.
I would like to speak at some point, too.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, but go ahead. Would you like me to go?
Yes, please go.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gregory, for your presentation. A couple of questions. When we talked to these schools, did they have more than one religious program in place or was it just one group that was coming to?
The ones I spoke to, Ms. Agostini, were one group. There are different groups. In Greenville, there was a group, the Greenville Christian. I don't have my notes with me. Ori, another. Lexington, one and two have the same group. But again, it, with the ones that I spoke to, it was one primary group.
So with one group, it, it sounded like it would be minimal. But when we're open to all entities based upon the number of entities that have the opportunity to take more staff time, if they're, if it's done on different days at different times?
I mean, with the law, we would have to be open to all entities. I think that's one of the things I talked about with considerations. You know, that being open to all private entities who wish to offer release time religious instruction regardless of the affiliation.
Okay, thank you. And the other question that I have for you is, we were talking, you talked about the permission form. Was that on a district link or are these groups?
No, 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 no. This was the, the organ, the private entities had websites. In particular, I gave examples of Greenville and Ori County where they had all this information. But no, it was not on a district website because no funds can be used. The statute says that no school funds can be used.
Okay, great. And that's where I needed clarity, and I missed hearing that part of it, so I appreciate that. And, you know, I, thank you, Mrs. Gregory. I'm just going to make a few comments now. And I really have appreciated, you know, what my colleagues have had to say. Again, in January, we set our priorities, safety and security. Is this really a priority at this point when we are implementing metal detectors? We're having a hard time finding staff to put in the schools to operate these metal detectors. And we've all heard about the traffic issues that we've had trying to, you know, get our kids and our parents in and out of school right now. Is this a priority? We talk about recruiting and retention. We've heard teachers tonight speak about being disposable. While it's up to the student to make up their own work, there are responsibilities or additional burdens put on our teachers. And we still have a good number of STEs or teachers that are not filled. We don't want this to turn teachers away. Academic achievements. I so appreciate what Mrs. Gregory and her department has done, but is this where we really want to focus our time? And then finally, you know, we talked about the special interest groups. I am so appreciative of everybody who's taken an interest in this district. But is this how the board is going to, you know, make its priorities? How does something that never came up in January when we set our priorities or in March when we did our SMART goal, all of a sudden it's introduced in July and it's taken the elevator to the top floor and now become our focus of attention? We talked about it at our last meeting, and it's on our draft agenda for our next meeting. We talked about it at our last meeting and it's on our draft agenda for our next meeting. How has this become our number one priority? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini, I do want to make one correction, that when Mr. Bravick shared a video, and in that video, he talked to someone in California, someone in Greenville about programs, and he did mention more than one entity being involved. But again, I'm just speaking from those that we talked to, they only referenced one private entity when we interviewed or talked to districts.
Thank you, and that was my question was-
I just want to use that disclaimer.
Right. And Ms. Agostini, while we do not put on our website, we would not put the information on the website for parents to be able to click a button, please keep in mind that as a part of open house, like we have other after-school programs that parents can find out additional information about, parent would be able to find out information by any group that is offering religious studies as a part of release time. So they would have an opportunity to share that during an open house, just like we do if they do Taekwondo or the YMCA, those are outside organizations that we share information about.
That was very common. I did talk to a district where they had parent permission to share the email addresses of the students that were interested, the families that were interested.
Well, Mrs. Gregory, I thank you for clarifying that, you know, that Mr. Bravick had said that multiple organizations have gone into different ones. I was just, from a perspective of time, when it was minimal, it's only one group. When we're open, like we talked about, to everyone, it could become, you know, more significant. And I'll just finish by saying that I do agree with the benefits of religious instruction. My kids went through it through high school. And I also love the idea of the Good News Club and other religious groups coming to our schools or locations after school, just not during school. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right, if I may ask, oh, Ms. McFadden, yes, you go, please go.
I would just like to say that we have a strong diversity, equity, and inclusion program here, and it supports many, many different minority groups. And I would just like to say, is equity only for poor people? Is equity only for certain areas and certain people and certain groups, or is equity really for everybody? Because if we have a group that wants to have something for their children, by us blocking that, that's not showing that we're giving true equity to everyone. It's saying we're picking and choosing which groups we're going to support and which ones we're not. You, and one thing that I believe, you know, everyone gets the full picture of what this is about. Everyone understands it's legal, everyone understands that you can choose. The problem is, is that not everyone wants to have Christian education availability to everyone else. It is a choice. You either choose it or you don't. But to not have the opportunity to choose it is a completely different story. We have an opportunity for a boy who wants to dress up like a girl to go into a specific bathroom, and we approve that. And we did that for one child at one school, and there are others, but for this particular case, it was one child at one school. Now, we have had consistently, for three board meetings, a packed house of parents and community members that have come and said, we want this opportunity. We're just saying, give us a chance. You don't have to do it. And then if you do, there's an opportunity for a group that could do it. I know of two churches around the Ridgeview area that when I heard this, I thought, oh, this is a perfect opportunity, because we have one particular person who works with the district, or used to work for the district, who actually attends a church there. That would be great access, and when I thought about it, great access for them to take a bus, which is less than five minutes away, to go pick up students and bring them to their campus. It's a perfect opportunity, but you can't use government funds, and I believe the churches might be using government funds, so that might knock them out. And so I'm not sure, or if I'm ill speaking, but I'm saying, there's two churches I know that are close by, one of the pastors are here. So when I'm thinking of this, it's a great opportunity during school. If there's a fight that breaks out in the middle of school, you can rally some kids that have had that appointment, that form signed, take them out of the atmosphere for a minute, calm them down, send them back into the fray. Everybody needs a break, teachers get a break, students are constantly boom, 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 boom. They can't rest. You've got five minutes in between classes. And if I want my child to have peace in a day, one time a week, to come out of the atmosphere, that is, a lot of times, a war zone, we know that because we get student reports all the time, to come out for a few moments, to reset, to be prayed over in a group, they can do that in school, yeah, but they can come out as well and go back into the fray and do it again. Go for the rest of the day, it's only once a week, it's just an opportunity. That's all it is.
Thank you. I would like to say just a couple of things, and I'm as ready to go home as everyone else, but I'll be quick. I mentioned something last or two weeks ago, and I was wrong in what I said. I mentioned how we personally do some things in the mornings before school for students in the kind of subject we're talking about. And I also mentioned that I thought that that's the way to do it, and anything else is probably inefficient. And I was wrong to say that, and I'll tell you why. I had someone come up to me after the meeting and shared a story with me on people that don't have that opportunity. And, you know, to me, this is about just the one. All it takes is one student that would participate in this, and it changed their lives. You know, it isn't about the numbers. We've talked about things, traffic has been mentioned several times today, and it really saddens me, we bring up things that have nothing to do with this in an effort to scare people. How in the world would traffic before and after school affect something in the middle of the day? Okay, there's no traffic problems if you're coming and picking up children between classes, the traffic's in the morning and the afternoon. You know, do we have, and this, I don't know, Mrs. Gregory, if you can answer this, but I believe we have contractors hired to work the metal detectors that will be here shortly, is that correct, Dr. Moore?
We actually have four of the five schools fully staffed, and the last school is partially staffed, and we're still working on that.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, priorities, board priorities have been mentioned several times. Is that all we work on? Can we work on other things? Are our priorities slipping? Have we failed in any of those ways? You know, we just try to muddy the water here and make this seem like it's impossible to do. The reality is, this is called, oh, and I want to, I'm for this, okay? I don't want to disguise what I'm doing here like I'm batting the thing around here. No, I'm for this because I believe in freedom. I believe we have a law here that it is just this simple, excused school attendance for religious instruction. This takes place off of campus. Somebody mentioned in their comments, you know, I made all kinds of notes, I'm not going to be able to figure them out, but somebody mentioned that religion should be in the home and in the church. That's what we're doing here. We're leaving campus. People talk about separation of church and state. We are literally leaving campus. You know, if there's, like I said, if it's one child out there, how do you know who that child is going to grow up to be? If one child has a better life because their parents are able to provide this for them, is it worth it? And, you know, we talk about, I was going to read something here, but I think it was in poor taste. I have our calendar right here from last year. We talk about exclusion and things like that. There are at least 10 months that we celebrate something that singles out of a group of people. We talk about how are these kids going to feel that don't get to participate in the class? How do the children that aren't part of this feel all year long? I would hope that we are happy for one another. You know, we had, I attended the Black History Month honoree thing here in the district, right upstairs. It was wonderful to hear the success stories of these individuals we honored that night. And I was a little jealous, I wish I was accomplished as them. We need to learn to celebrate our differences, we need to embrace each other, we need to love each other, and do what is best for the one. And this isn't, and let's be realistic here, if there's not going to be a mass participation in this, it's going to be too difficult. All the liability is with the entity that's going to sponsor this, the district will have no liability. And lawsuits, like we said a moment ago, people sue for anything. You know, we can't let fear of a lawsuit keep us from doing what we're responsible for doing. You have to have written consent. I was talking with someone that is what I consider being expert on this subject, very experienced in this, worked out out west in this kind of program, and he told me of one thing that he thought was bad, and that was one school district did not get the proper paperwork, and they ended up being liable for something that happened. You know, so we have to make sure we do what we're supposed to do, we follow the law. You know, no student can be released from a core academic subject. There's not going to be people failing classes and not graduating because they participate in this. It's five very specific conditions that have to be met here. Again, I am for passing a policy, I'm for the district controlling how that policy is implemented. You know, we can make these entities do whatever we want to do. You know, just because we pass a policy doesn't mean we're going to just open the gates of the school and let people run out and jump on a bus. There will be safeguards in place, and again, I'm for it because I believe that we have the obligation to assist parents. There is a whole chapter in Section 59 of state law that is dedicated to parental involvement in the schools. You know, I was going to quote some things from it, but we're out of time, it doesn't matter. But the reality is, we are obligated as a school district to help parents do things that will help their children receive the education the parents want. We can homeschool children if we want to, so we certainly can allow them to choose their classes at school. Now, is there anyone else that has any comments or anything they'd like to bring up?
Ms. Trapp, I do.
Yes, Dr. Scott?
Yes, just a couple of things. One, thank you for your comment, because I just listened to you on the radio, on the Cynthia On Point, Cynthia Hardy Show, and you shared on the radio station, feel free to go back and listen to that, that you have not made a decision that you wanted more research and that this was going to take a couple of months, but you have a right to change your mind quickly, because we all can change our mind, but I just wanted to put that out there, just on yesterday, well, the day before.
Two days ago.
Two days ago, you said you weren't clear and you were not going to make a decision.
I am now, though.
Okay, that's fine, you have a right to change your mind.
No, I didn't change my mind, I made my mind up. That's what there's a difference.
That's great, but let me just say this, too. You made mention of a program that we have, that's called a Black History Program. And unfortunately, we only get one month, which we deserve every month of the year, just like everyone else, so I want to make that clear, that Black History is important, and the school district celebrates us one month, so I don't see just a little thing that we do once a month. I see that as my cultural, my history, and it also reminds me of someone put something out on social media the other day, and they said, we are not our ancestors. And I think people better realize that. We are not our ancestors. So I wanted to address that. The other thing is, we're talking about building a new performing arts center. That's part of electives, the fine arts. So we're pulling students away, but we are investing millions of dollars just to build a building that Mr. Anderson just showed us. So we need to be mindful of our taxpayers' money when we're talking about electors are important in one sense, and we take your money and we build this building, now we're getting ready to pull it out. And then the other thing that someone talked about, college and career ready, that's what we're here to do, to teach and to learn. So when we're talking about social groups, I had a couple of students to reach out to me last week, and they said, well, if I get my parents and my friends to come to a board meeting, because I'm at a school and I want to be a barber, and I want to be a cosmetologist when I leave Richland, too, but because I don't attend that school, I have to graduate from Richland, too, and spend thousands of dollars to go back. So when we're talking about special interest groups, let's have a special interest group on bringing cosmetology and barbering to this beautiful location that we have here now, so students don't have to spend money, but we don't welcome that. I'm an educator, and I'm an educator and a teacher at heart. I've spent 35 years in the district. I have boots on the ground, so I'm going to respect my teachers and my educators because I've been there and I know what they do. I'm not going to just pull straws and think I'm an expert because I'm on the board. I'm pulling straws because I'm an expert, because I've been in the field for 35 years. And finally, I'm going to say, we have different groups that we are part of, that anytime something comes about, we want to bring them in and get their opinion. Well, with this group, we haven't done that. We haven't done that with release time. We have a managerial group, consistent of about 20-plus pastors. Have we gotten that group to get input from them? We have a parent advisory group, a student advisory group, SIC, and the list goes on. Have we had those meetings to see how they feel about what's going on? Surveys, we survey everything else. When we were getting ready to get this awesome superintendent we have now, the community came together, they wanted a survey, they wanted interest groups on everything else. Where's that survey now? Where's that interest group? And then finally, I think my colleagues said it well, we come here, and I believe some of us are Christians, some of us are not, that's not for me to judge. But one thing that I did not like, and my colleagues mentioned that, when people come here and say, I'm a Christian and I want what's right for my students, and then you go on Facebook and you send us emails and say, you can't be a Christian because you don't want to vote for this. It's not for anyone to judge who we are and what we do. And some of you are sitting out here tonight that sent those emails to be critical about whether we are Christian or not, but I'm going to let you be the judge of that, and then I'll judge you. No, I let God judge you. I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory, for your presentation. Mr. Chair, we need direction as to what the board would like to do as far as next steps, please.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
Did, I had one more statement to make. I know Dr. Scott had two times, and I wanted to make sure I make that.
You make, yes. You are correct, and we are allowed two, two times each, so yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to speak as well.
And I believe Ms. Agostini is also on the line with her second time. I wanted to make one more thing clear, and that is that I'm going to name this elephant in the room, and that is, this topic has become extremely political. And it's become, it's gotten to the point where you have other political officials getting involved, that people are contacting them, and different topics brought up to us about what was on our platform and so forth. We are now in a place where it's not political anymore, we have to represent all students. And it, to me, the fact that this was so urgent, and I've heard mention of, I've told people that I would support this and things like that, it just, it makes me concerned, especially when my colleague mentioned that there was a sense of urgency in this. And I don't want to do anything that is, that comes across as political. I received an email recently during this meeting about different organizations involved in providing services for our students and then requiring them to sit through preaching. And also, the possibility of preaching on anti-something that represents students within our school district. And that just is very much concerning to me, and I'll forward that to you, Dr. Moore, as well. But again, it comes across very political, and we need to be mindful of that and know that when a group comes in large numbers, that we're not moving and shifting, because it could be very much political. Even political groups were brought up, or not political groups, but special interest groups were brought up in the interview that Mr. Trapp participated in. And again, I felt like it was, it was moving in areas of political favoritism in certain areas.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Anybody else have any other comments?
Ms. Trapp.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Very quickly, after, Mr. Trapp, after Ms. Agostini, I have like one thing to say.
Ms. Agostini, did you have, did you have something else to say?
No, I do have something else to say. There was just talk, and I was waiting to be recognized clearly. So, no, thank you, and I, Mr. Trapp, I thank you for bringing up or mentioning the confusion of a statement that I made when I brought up the safety and security and getting the kids to and from school. My intent in bringing that up was not to imply that this would add to the problem during the middle of the school day. My point being made, or that I tried to make, was this is just one other issue that's taking administration's focus away from addressing issues that we have on hand. So it wasn't to say that it was going to contribute to an additional problem, I just see, at this point in time, that we have other priorities that we made, and we should focus on those and not bring on additional tasks at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anyone else have anything to? Oh, Mrs. Nash.
Mr. Chairman, I have, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say, you know, like, we, a lot of times, you know, we get to these meetings and we do things and we hear applause and we hear people, you know, cheering and we start promotions about things, we, um, say things that have the threat from a lot of what we're actually talking about. I want to say something about special interests because it's kind of like saying that there are people who are telling people what to do. Now, I've been on this board, I've been off this board, and I've been on the end of many of the conversations where a bit we always spread, it had nothing to do with Christian people, it had to do completely the opposite. So I want to make sure that we are not attacking people because it's on both ends. But one of the things that really gets me is to say that special interest groups are controlling people on the board. So I believe that. At one point in time, we could say that about anybody, but to say that about any board member is wrong. And I wouldn't do it to anybody on this board. But I will say this, special interest groups, the only group that is a special interest group to me are the parents, teachers, and the students. And we say we represent all, but then we get up here and we say the opposite. And I'm going to believe that. It's not, we don't represent all because that's not what you guys are doing.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Oh, Ms. Washington.
Um, I just want to say this, that at the end of the day, no matter how we decide to go forward, I want to encourage us as a board to remain nonpartisan because that's what our role is. I also want to encourage us to please, please, let's not try to get to a place where we are, um, responding to every comment that somebody makes. I want us to stay united and that's very hard to do when we are very passionate about this. Every last one of us are passionate about this decision in our own right and I respect that. I had to get to a place where I said, "I respect everybody's position whether they go for it or against it." I want us to be able to get this thing together and decide on how we're going to move forward with it. Let's give administration whatever we would like for them to do with this and move forward for Richland 2 because that's what we are here to do. At the end of the day, I'm going to high-five every last one of you. I'm going to tell you I love you, I'll pray for you, I will continue to call you and ask for your advice or ask how you see something. How, but we, I want to encourage us, let's avoid conflicts of interest and refrain from trying to make these decisions and always be at each other's throat. Let's move forward, no matter how we vote, in peace, y'all. Because we don't want the public to go back and say, "See how they're acting? Look at how they're acting." No, we want to move forward because I will always echo what Dr. Scott said. We can be the best board that is an example to all boards in South Carolina. So let's move forward with however we're going to do that. Let's give administration the direction. I would like for us to do that today. And however we decide and whatever we decide, let's move forward, y'all. I'm serious. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Uh, if I may add just a couple of things, it, earlier, I hesitate to bring these numbers up, but earlier it was mentioned about a survey specifically with the superintendent search. And I could be wrong about the numbers, but I think that the people that participated in the survey was just under 400. Uh, if anybody knows otherwise, I want to say it was 300 and some odd people participated in the survey for something that important. There are over 100,000, no, I'm sorry, I had the numbers wrote down. There's almost 200,000 registered voters in this school district. A survey of 400 people does not reflect even 1% of the registered voters in this district. I appreciate surveys and everything, but I had a conversation today with a former school board member that called me. We had a nice, long conversation. I think it was a pleasant conversation when it ended. Uh, but one thing that she mentioned to me is that it is wrong of us to tell the administration to do, to make all these phone calls and stuff because they're spending district money. And I said, "You know, I have, I agree with you. We need to, we need to just move forward with this. We don't, we don't need to do any more research. I think we all know what we need to know." We have a, we have a policy that has been drafted and is the standard policy the South Carolina School Board Association gives to districts like us for us to consider, to work on, modify as we wish. Uh, and I think that we should take that. And I don't see any reason we have three weeks before the next board meeting. I don't see any reason we can't have that. Look at it and if board members want to add to it, take away from it, do whatever. I think we need to do that. We can have a vote on it, the meeting after that, and this is done. We don't have to worry about this anymore. Everybody wants to get it over with and we're wasting time is what I've been accused of. Uh, the thing that bothers me most about this, and this is going to sound unkind, but I, it somewhat bothers me that I think there are so many people out here that don't want to see this happen, that have absolutely no desire to participate in it. You know, the very small number of people that would participate in this, that would benefit from it, I just find it sad that so many people don't want to give them that opportunity. That's all they're asking for. Let's pass a policy, give them an opportunity to try to pull this off. I've said before, I don't think it would be much participation because it's a very restrictive thing. You have to take on all this liability, you've got to have, and there was talk earlier about credits and everything. I don't think we've discussed that. That's a whole different law. There's no desire that I've heard from anybody to have credit associated. How would you get credit when you're already getting credit for the class you're leaving? You know, that, again, let's don't mix up things here that aren't applying to what we're talking about here. All we're talking about is giving parents an opportunity to not have an absence counted against their child to go to a class. You know, theoretically, I asked several parents about this. I said, "You know, theoretically, could you go pick your child up first period for four weeks, take them somewhere and do something with them? The next four weeks, do it during the second period. Next four weeks, do it in the third period." You know, we let our parents do whatever they want. They can go on vacation, do it as long as they don't exceed the five absences. People could actually take their children out of core classes if they wanted to and take them down the street to a church for a class. Like, you know, do it four times in a semester. So I think this is something, again, I want to pass a policy that will allow people to try. And I don't think that's asking too much. I don't think it's leaving people out either, but maybe I'm narrow-minded. Anyway, that would be my suggestion. Let's get, let's work on the policy we have that we've been, that we were graciously given by the School Board Association. They gave us a policy a few months ago about board member removal from office and we jumped on that. There wasn't any debate there. We just went and went with it. Uh, I think we should take this policy, tweak it. If you don't like it, make it where it'll work for you. If you don't like how it's, how they've written it, other districts have changed the policy and made it much more difficult for entities to do this. But I think we need to give people an opportunity to try.
Mr. Chair.
That's all I have. Is there, Ms. McFadden, did you have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, um, I would like to make a motion that we direct administration to draft a policy, um, much like the one provided to us by the South Carolina School Board Association, according to the statute, South Carolina Code 59-1460 of 2013.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Ms., Dr. Scott.
This says no action requested. So you cannot make a motion when we have it on here as no action requested. So...
Well, you're correct. We don't need a motion to ask for the district to work on a policy. I didn't care to have a motion to do this, but the administration can present us with a policy without an action taken.
Right.
So...
Well, um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have to make a motion. I would just like to make a request that district administration draft a policy for the South Carolina Code 59-1460, um, much like the one from the South Carolina School Board Association.
I think, Dr. Moore, do you have anything?
Um, let me just make another comment. Once again, this is a no-action item. Once we get down to, are there any items that you would like to add to the draft agenda? It will be appropriate at that time, but right now it's out of order.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I'll make sure I remember to do it then. Thank you.
I think Dr. Scott is right. Let's, we're, we'll move on. Is there? Ms. McFadden, did you want to make any other comments? So you're the only person that hasn't taken their second round.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if you'll give me a second to find my paper. This has been an exciting evening. All right. Ah, okay, Section 10, New Business, No Action Required. Safety update. The only agenda item in this section is an update on the district's safety plan. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Mr. Will Anderson, our Chief Operations Officer, to give a safety update.
Should I be to wait or? Okay. Well, I'm back. I know it's late, so I'm going to be succinct as possible and I actually will, uh, stick to my script so I can stay on time here. Uh, so good evening again. Um, tonight I wanted to provide an update regarding the district's change in crossing guards and directing traffic. Uh, first, I want to make sure I give everybody a little bit of background regarding our crossing guards and traffic control in Richland 2. And then want to make sure to remind you all and the public of the applicable federal and state laws as well the opinion of the South Carolina Attorney General. Uh, next, we'll review the action steps that have been taken by the district and our partners when we were informed of this change, followed by our current bus rider, car rider, and walkers data, and finally, some of our next steps. The district's safety and security team was established in the 1990s. Uh, by the late 90s, the team was working 24/7. Each shift had about four to six people on the shift. During the shift changes, when the officer's coming off third shift and the officer's coming off, on to first shift, that's when we would, that we would direct traffic and act as crossing guards. Same thing would happen in the afternoon shift between first and second. In 2003, with the retirement of our former manager of security, the district hired two former law, Richland County Sheriff's deputies to lead the team. These men had a heavy law enforcement background to include traffic control. They began to place more, more of an emphasis on directing traffic. As you know, Richland 2 has been a very growing school district and it's been growing for many years. And that's, in, as we have grown, as, in, as example, over 1,000 students in the mid 2000s, our security force increased as well. Every time we opened a new school, we assigned a crossing guard or someone to direct traffic at that school. Now, we didn't do this to a full-time officer. We did this to part-time officers, getting upwards of 40 people, 40 traffic posts we were directing. Additionally, during these last 20 years, we have seen an increase in our school resource officers, with tremendous thanks to Sheriff Lot, the South Carolina General Assembly, the South Carolina Department of Public Safety, and you all of our school board, supporting our school resource officers. With this increase, it has allowed our team over the past several years to provide more of a focus on safety measures to include crossing guards and school traffic. In early 2023, our Director of Safety and Emergency Services conducted a safety audit based on bit-smart responses from other districts across the state. And in his monthly meetings with his counterparts across the state, he found out that we were the only district directing traffic without law enforcement. According to the US, whoops, sorry about that. According to the US Department of Transportation Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, Chapter 7D, Section 5, Operating Procedures for Adult Crossing Guards states, "Adult crossing guards shall not direct traffic in the usual law enforcement regulatory sense." Additionally, in 2014, the Ori County School District and the Ori County Sheriff's Department requested the opinion of the South Carolina Attorney General on this matter of crossing guards directing traffic or non-law enforcement. In the opinion of 2004, in the opinion in 2014 and reaffirmed to our superintendent in the last couple of weeks, quote, "The authority of adult uniform crossing guards to direct or control traffic is limited to ordering vehicles on public roadways to stop so children walking to or from school may safely cross the street. Additionally, such crossing guards do not have the authority to direct or control traffic on public roadways near a school for the purpose of reducing traffic congestion and thus should not be used for such purposes." End quote. With this new information, is what do we do next? There are three, there are three areas that we focused on since we found this out. We focused on internally our Richland 2 and our safety team and what we could do. We focused on working with law enforcement. And lastly, with the South Carolina Department of Transportation or our Richland County Public Works who owns and maintain our public roads. Within the district, we first started with our internal commation, with our internal communication with our district-level leadership. We started to do more research on the actual law, who could actually direct traffic, what other districts were doing, et cetera. Our general counsel reached out to her counterparts in the state to get opinions on what they were doing and how they were interpreting this law. We began a phased approach of reassigning officers who were only directing traffic by not filling vacancies or other means at Blythewood High School, Killian Elementary, and Round Top. We began the process of retraining our safety officers on the proper steps for crossing guards and not directing traffic, but only to stop traffic for children to cross the street. We began ordering and providing them with the resources required by law to direct traffic to include high-visibility vests and a handheld stop sign. We began communicating to all schools and more direct communication to those schools with significant changes through both our safety office and the communications department through emails, newsletters, and in-service. We then reviewed our historical walker locations as well as information from a survey sent to schools to inform us on walker locations so we could assign crossing guards to the appropriate spots. As mentioned earlier, as we, whoops, where did I miss off here? There we go. I was way off. There we go. Sorry about that. As mentioned earlier, as we learned crossing guards cannot direct traffic, we began having conversations with our law enforcement partners. We began discussions with Richland 2 SRO leadership. Uh, we began working through potential solutions or different avenues, most if not all of them, including some form of increase in staffing that did not exist with the Sheriff's Department. The solution as we moved into the school year was to request special duty or extra duty applications. Special duty or extra duty is when officers not working their current work pick up extra shifts or work assignments. These include traffic controls, that's traffic control at churches or other events, working football games, or even our two officers who are here tonight who work school board meetings. This special or extra duty is all, is by officer availability. One issue with that, this, is that most of our, your office, of our officers are unable to pick up extra duty for morning or afternoon traffic due to most working first shifts who traditionally pick up extra work on nights or weekends. We continue to coordinate with Richland County Sheriff's Department for any increase in deputies and we continue to work with them for consistency on filling those locations. I will say that my counterparts and my partners there and our district's partners at Richland County Sheriff's Department are working tirelessly and very hard to get deputies to assist and fill these spots. I know my contacts there have been working all avenues to encourage those deputies to work those traffic spots. We've also worked, leached out to our other state-level law enforcement agencies and they have similar results due to staffing concerns and staffing issues that they have. Lastly, with these being public roads, we've been working with the South Carolina Department of Transportation and the Richland County Public Works Department. For many years, we've had a great relationship with these agencies as we've built new schools, requested additional turn lanes, paving of roads, et cetera. We've met multiple times with the SC DOT and have, and have had conversations with Richland County Public Works on this topic. We have put in multiple requests for traffic signals, crosswalks, signage, et cetera. Both agencies have been working on installing additional crosswalks and signage based on their guidelines. They've also provided suggestions on road improvements to reduce traffic. As of today, they have not approved the stoplight or other traffic-controlling methods due to not meeting SC DOT standards or Richland County Public Works standards for stoplights. Our conversations with them are ongoing. Some important data, we started this school year so that you know, as of today is the 11th day of the school year. In the morning, we have 14,117 bus riders, 13,815 car riders, 870 walkers or bikers, and 96 students getting to school from their daycare. In the afternoon, we have an increase of bus riders to 14,668, a decrease in car riders to 2,297, an increase in walkers to 1,243. 50 are going to daycare and 2,155 are staying at a school program. This data is based on information in Power School. Additionally, this year, we have placed crossing guards at crosswalks that are within the SC DOT school zones where students have to cross a street, where there's a crosswalk. These locations include Blythewood Middle School, Bridge Creek, Catawba Trail, Conder, Dent, E. L. Wright, CFK, Forest Lake, Lake Carolina Lower, Kelly Mills, CFA, Longleaf, North Springs, Richland Northeast, Spring Valley, Summit Parkway, CFI, and Windsor. Uh, locations that had traffic control only and no longer have traffic control that are not there this year include Blythewood High School, Bookman Road, Lonnie B. Nelson, Pontiac, Round Top, Killian, Sandlapper, and Ridgeview. So our next steps, as we are entering into the day 12 tomorrow, we will continue to have our conversations and partner with the Richland County Public Works, the South Carolina Department of Transportation, Richland County Sheriff's Department, and our internal safety team on solutions. Department, and our internal safety team on solutions. We have looked into private security to direct traffic, as well as Class III law enforcement officers to direct traffic on public roads. Private security cannot direct traffic on public roads, but they can on private property. Per state law and the South Carolina Law Enforcement Training Council, only law enforcement officers can direct traffic to include those Class III basic officers, which have very limited duties. Those Class III officers have to go through the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy and be employed by a law enforcement agency. So, in essence, this would still be contracted, as we do with the Richland County Sheriff's Department currently. We will continue to do all we can within the law in working with different avenues. For example, we have been in contact with Senator Graham's office today. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you for your time on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Chair, we are now open for questions.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I do. So, I guess one of the biggest concerns are that left-hand turn coming out of most of those schools, especially when the traffic coming in the opposite direction is not stopping. So, basically, what it is, is that as citizens, we're just going to have to be cognitive and stop your car and let your neighbor turn, or else, even at Spring Valley, and I'll give that an example because I travel through there, and Polo Road. If I'm traveling from Polo Road Park toward Polo Road Elementary School, the traffic at Polo Road Elementary School is wrapped around that, the car rider drop-off line because the traffic flows heavy on that road. So, unless someone stops their car or literally slows down to let these people out, the traffic at Polo Road is all the way wrapped around the school. Now, I did it a couple of times because I recognized the issue, so I slowed my car down, tried to let some people out. Well, the traffic behind me is beeping their horn, wanting me to go on. And that's how you find it even at Spring Valley, because when you're traveling, coming from Two Notch Road to Clemson Road, on that road right in front, on Sparkleberry Road, if you're heading straight or you're trying to make that left-hand turn, you cannot get out. So, basically, what the public is hearing, and that's just the two I experienced, what the public is hearing is if you're going to make that left-hand turn, it's a free-for-all. We do not want to continue having children getting even mildly struck by cars because there's not someone out there with the bright yellow jacket to direct traffic to help our students. And I talked to Dr. Moore, and I am really adamant, we need some kind of officer, some kind of patrol, someone with this Class III out there. And we did put money aside for officers, for hiring officers, and I know that we've been asking for substitutes and things like that, but this is something that is urgent and very important, especially when we have young children trying to cross in areas that may not have a crossing guard. And I know that your team and I know the district have done, you know, all that they can, and I know that this is something that we're going to have to get, like Dr. Moore said, we're going to have to talk to our state legislators to get them at least for some time, at some period, to say, hey, can we get, you know, just a temporary release on this to help us? And I understand that, you know, it might be trying to get police officers, you know, to actually sign up, but if you dangle that money good and hard enough, they'll come. And we have money in this district to do that. And we got budget transferred, so if it's not on one side, we can transfer it to something until we get this fixed. So, that is a grave concern because we do have small children and even older kids who see the light is green or that tells them not to go, and they're going anyway because they think they can beat the traffic across the street. We don't need any children getting hit by cars in this district. We don't want that. And I think that's all, and then the signage and the stoplights, you know, that's going to take forever, trying to get a stoplight up. You know, it's easy to get somebody out there with a stop sign just like that than it would be to try to get them to do some traffic digging up of holes to put in a stoplight. So, I think we need to figure out something. In Richland County, whoever's in charge of these police officers, please help us out. We need this for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Trav. I do have one, two questions. Why can't we use SROs? I know that it was said, or it was said to me, and I would love for, you know, to get the real correct answer, that I guess they have to do a sweep in the school or security is needed in the schools at the stations. But why can't we use SROs?
In our MOU with the Sheriff's Department, it states that they will only do traffic in emergency situations, but that question would have to be for the Sheriff's Department.
All right. And then, my other question is, and I don't know if this can happen, but we mentioned talking about our legislators. We have two of them here. Is there any way we can get them to comment on this situation if they would like to give them the opportunity to speak about that? Because we did say for us to contact them, but if they have some insight that they can share with the public, if they're willing to, I would love to be able to hear that because, so is that an option?
Well, that sure puts people on the spot. If I may comment, I wouldn't, I'd hesitate to ask our representatives to make a lot of comments here because realistically, this is something that they can't do anything about until the next session, and I don't know that they give a lot of thought to our short-term problems. Certainly, long-term problems, it would be logical that the General Assembly might could pass some type of legislation that would allow different type of training, maybe a different type of category for someone that would allow us to hire someone and train them specifically for traffic instead of carrying a gun and shooting at people, you know?
Absolutely. I do have one more thing to say just about that. And this is why I think it's important for us to make sure we have, we create a table and a space and an opportunity for us to be able to reach out to our legislators and have that conversation and talk with them and get their opinions and get their ideas, which is why it's important for us to implement the policy that we did today, and I'm very glad to hear. But we've got to start having conversations about what's a priority for Richland Two as well. But I do want to just, I want to thank them for being here, and then whatever support can be offered to the district, you know, we, of course, are always welcome to hear that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, really?
Mr. Chairman.
You have? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Porter.
I just want to state that I think it's unfair for us to ask for our legislative representatives to come to us. I think we need to reach out to them when there's an issue. I wish that we had done so before making all of these changes, just to see if we could work on something together. After speaking to one of our elected officials from county, I learned that the SC DOT is under our governor. So, that might be something that we want to look out, look into of what our options might be until our representatives can help us out when they return back in session and then, I'm sure, months later. But we need some temporary relief. And I spoke to another representative who mentioned that as well, that they welcome discussions from us. But I think it's making the decision first and then asking. I wish we would have had these conversations with them beforehand, so. I know that's not solving anything, but it's just something to think about in the future.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? I do have one question, it is simple. How many personnel are we short to accomplish what we want to?
We're okay on crossing guards. I mean, we, the majority of our spaces are, have a crossing guard. There may be, if there's a crossing guard, it may be because they're not actually crossing the street, for example, a walker, but I can't be, I don't want to sit here and say for certain, but about 99.9% every crossing spot that we have within our school zone where students walk to are manned by a crossing guard. For traffic issues, we do not do traffic anymore. So, right now, North Springs is hit or miss when a Richland County Sheriff's deputy will show up to direct traffic.
Well, that's my question. How many schools would we like to have the Sheriff's Department have a man at?
Right now, the ones that are the most pressing are the ones that have the highest traffic volume. So, it would be our schools that are on Clemson Road, Killian, North Springs, Summit Parkway, the two-lane roads in Blythewood that have a lot of traffic issues. Some of your neighborhood schools, you know, the traffic is, there's not, there's not other traffic going to work, so it's not as pressing, per se, for the traffic. But if, you know, to Ms. McFadden's point, making a left-hand turn on Clemson Road at 7:45 in the morning is nearly impossible. And so, those that have all that other traffic that are major arteries that lead to the interstates or lead to, you know, Rhimer Pond Road, Langford Road that lead to get out, it would be best for us to assist or find someone to help those motorists, those Richland County taxpayers, those Richland County citizens get to their job and not be stuck in that traffic. Yes, sir.
One more question, and I don't expect an answer. For future planning, how hard is it to get stoplights installed at some of these locations? I know that takes a long time and it costs us money, doesn't it?
It depends. So, for the stoplight that was installed on right over here, Premier Drive, that took a lot of what's happened now advocacy, and then it became fruition, but it takes a traffic study. It takes money. So, it would be on us or the county or the DOT to do that traffic study and go with that. Now, that's all based on the current SC DOT information about how they install those, as well as Richland County. And so, they have their guides and policy they go by. And so, it just depends. I mean, I've also, there's ways we could make this a higher priority as we continue to focus on the traffic stuff, but in regards to the law, we're kind of in that, in that time period, we have to wait until they're ready to potentially take up that.
Well, I had a thought a minute ago when Mrs. Porter was talking. You know, our presidents have no trouble with executive orders. Does our governor write executive orders? I mean...
Do you write, do you write one?
No, I can't. No, but, you know, maybe we can get him to, you know, do something there and wave a magic wand.
Did you want to speak?
Okay, oh, if you would, yes, please.
Representative Ivory Thicpen, Pastor Ivory Thicpen, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak again. Thank you all for offering yourself to serve. This is no easy task, as observed over the last few hours. And regardless of our opinions or perspectives or experiences, I do think we have the common goal of seeing the district be better and children and parents be served. So, I just wanted to start there. I came here specifically for the traffic control piece. I could share some other comments, but I refrained from the previous discussion. So, my understanding is that we quoted US DOT guidelines from the manual, guidelines have statutory authority that preempt all state laws. So, the resolve of the resolution from this has to come from the federal level. That's my understanding of it. Let me bag up and say, after thanking you all for being here, I'm here to help, right? Regardless of our opinions or agreements or disagreements, I'm here to help. With that being said, I reached out to the U.S. Attorney at their boroughs, and I asked her to get opinions from US DOT, as well as US DOJ and potentially even U.S. Department of Education, because that's the federal level where the guidelines really have to be addressed. The stopping and releasing of children, one of the questions that I have is if we stop and release traffic for students, ask pedestrians to get on and off of campus, do we not also have the ability to stop and release traffics of students to get on and off campus in vehicles, i.e. buses? Because it's my understanding that even with the changes in how we practice, and I use the collective term "we," I'm a part of the district, that we are still stopping so that the buses can get out. And I would, and this is how I have posed the question as an opinion at the federal level, is that if we allow the stopping and releasing for children, students to get on and off campus on bus vehicles, we can also stop in traffic for students to get on and off campus in vehicles that may be carpooling in. I am awaiting that. Once I get it, I will gladly forward it. I too had questions about the SRO, and I am of the opinion, and this is my opinion, that it's much easier to change a memorandum of understanding with Richland County, and I do plan to call Sheriff Lot and have the conversation. It's much easier to change a memorandum of understanding than to pass law. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, we don't go back to January. Sani-Dai does not allow us to take up any other issues than the ones that we said we were going to take up. So, we couldn't even begin to talk about it in January, and even if we did, then there's no guarantee that that would be something that would be prioritized. So, even we talk about the county level and the SC DOT, even if we provided relief or legislation at that level, I'm not sure it would be helpful in that way. Again, we're here to help. If I can just be a little candid, if you all would allow me, and please do not take this as a shot. I too would have much preferred, rather than being the district being directed to contact me, that there were conversations that could have been had and still can be had. And I know that, you know, the makeup of the board, as well as our superintendent is majority new, and that is no hard feelings in any of that being said. It's just to reiterate, we are here, and I speak on behalf of myself, and I hope my colleague as well, that we are, we are here to help, you know? You know, one of the things that saddens me, if I could just close with this before I sit down, you know, I believe all of us are passionate people who want the same thing, share goals, share responsibilities. I do not hope that we go down a path of division where we become not only personal in our comments toward one another, but also unprofessional. I agree, there is much potential for anybody who desires to do well. My concern, and I know, I am a pastor, I am a religious educator. My concerns and my questions do not speak to my lack of faith or my lack of conviction or opportunity to proselytize or evangelize. I've dedicated my life to it. But from a policy and operational standpoint, I just have questions, and I think in this space, there should always be an opportunity for questions to be asked and for data and information to be acquired. I think every educational institution should be about the business of researching. And so, and I'm going to apologize for myself and others, forgive me if sometimes I want to slow down some things in order that I may be more informed in making a decision. It does not say that I am against it or delay it or deny it, it's just saying that I just want to do what I believe we all want to do as our fiduciary responsibility. So, again, thank God for this opportunity for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chairman. I know everyone is tired and the late evening has grown long, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions about the safety update? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Ms. Porter, you may briefly, no, I'm kidding. You can take...
For our students who may be tardy due to traffic, is there any leniency if a parent were to write a note saying that something has taken place with the construction and so forth?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're lenient. I mean, if it's someone who shows up five days in a row, you know, I mean, there's, yes, they're lenient. That'd answer your question. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yep, thank you.
All right, let's take a look at the draft agenda for September 12 meeting, for the September 12 meeting. Dr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The draft agenda for the September 12, 2023 school board meeting, we will follow our standard procedures. So, first, we will start with our call to order, followed by approval of the agenda. We will then enter into executive session, and during our executive session, we will recess and discuss the admission into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and public session will resume at 6:30 p.m. or when the board finishes their session, because we don't always make that time. We will then come back into public session and have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the consent agenda. During the consent agenda, we will have approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meetings, as well as classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Then, we'll move to item number six, which is public participation. Once public participation is concluded, we will then move to voting on executive session items, which would include voting on the admission request into the district's adult education program, the employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed, items discussed in executive session. We will then move to section eight, which is our unfinished business, no action required. Currently, on the agenda is an update... Currently on the agenda is an update on release time for religious instruction. We will then move to new business, no action required. We will have a report on elementary and middle achievement data. Next, we'll have agenda items for the next meeting, which would include discussing the draft agenda items for the September 26th, 2023 meeting. If necessary, we will have another public participation, as well as an executive session if needed. If they are not needed, we will move to section 13, which is, um, well, we would not be voting on executive session items because we wouldn't need it. We'll move to section 14, which is board and superintendent comments, followed by section 15, which is our adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you. The, uh, board members, are there any items that you would like revision, you'd like to add or anything you'd like to revise, uh, on the September 22nd agenda? Or any future agenda for that matter?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ms. Porter.
Um, I'd like a discussion, um, about the issue with the excused absences. Um, I think I'd like to look at that again and see if there are opportunities for clarity for the message that's sent out to our community.
Oh, well, let, let, let's definitely add it because I, I too am concerned, uh, I've, I've, yeah, it's, it's something a lot of people are concerned about. And I think we should, we should look. No, we, we. All right. Is there anything else, uh, we would like to add or any revisions?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mrs. McFadden.
I do see that, um, on number eight, unfinished business, no action requested, there's already an update for the release time religious instruction. Um, can we be a little bit more specific and, and get that to be, um, a policy drafted by administration, uh, based on, uh, what was provided for us by the South Carolina School Board Association?
Um, I, I'm of the opinion that having it on here is an opportunity to talk about it and we could discuss a specific policy. Since it is under no action requested, i- if we have a policy to talk about, that would be the first reading, which I think is where it would be if that was the case.
Yes, sir. That's what I mean.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll, I think where it's at will work for what we want to do.
Yes, sir.
No matter what we decide to do. Uh, if, if someone knows something otherwise, I'd appreciate the input, but.
Chairman Trap, may I ask a clarifying question? So we're gonna have, so it's on the agenda for another discussion. Is, is that what we're saying? Or are we going to? I'm, I'm confused about what the, the next steps are because we've had four discussions about this.
I, I think if we're gonna do anything, we need to have a policy to look at.
So would that be there, would that be for them to bring the policy since we already have the model?
Uh, th- this is what I envision and, uh, you know, I, I certainly, uh, will of the board is what matters here. But I, I'm of the, uh, position that we have the policy that was provided by the School Board Association. I think over the next three weeks, we should all give input to the administration and to each other and come prepared at the next board meeting to modify the, that policy or work on it, whatever way we see fit. And, and go ahead and have something to look at. And if we have something we like, great. If not, we'll.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Ms. Agostini.
If, if we're going to have a discussion on a policy, it is my opinion that especially something like this, it would be more beneficial for the board to discuss the policy during a board workshop versus a board meeting. Well, when we're trying to work together through what we'd like to see, so that everybody can hear each other's opinions and not just email administration. And something else that I want to bring up, um, I, I agree with what, uh, Mrs. Porter, having a discussion again on our absentee policy, but, um, the board did pass a policy that said, in order to get something on the agenda, we either one, have a majority vote or three emails need to go in.
Well, Mrs. Agostini, I, I'm of the, I'm of the opinion that when we change the policy to, uh, include two ways for something to be added to the agenda, that was a way for someone to get something on the agenda positively. In, in other words, if we make a motion and it's, it's, uh, seconded and passes, it's on the agenda. That, that, you know, it doesn't remove the opportunity to add something to the agenda by the chairman or the superintendent or another board member's suggestion. That's my opinion of, I, I think that is an added way to some, uh, put something on the agenda, not the exclusive way.
Okay, so clarify that the, the board chair and the superintendent, regardless of how the board, you know, votes or feels, can at their discretion add something onto the agenda.
I, I, I believe that's correct. They can add something. The chairman nor the superintendent could remove something from the board or from the agenda that had been, uh, had been moved and seconded and, and voted on. I think that's really what we're talking about here. It, it, the, the things that we added allows individuals to, to have something added to the agenda that could not be removed at the discretion of the superintendent or the board chairman. That, that's what I, that's what in my mind the modifications to the policy meant. It doesn't mean we have to only do that, but it, it ensures that something can't be removed, if that makes sense.
I mean, no, I'm, I'm a little, you know, confused here, but I, I, I appreciate your clarity because that was a huge concern, you know, when I was the board chair, of things being added by the interim superintendent or myself or us working together. So as long as everybody's clear that at the discretion of the board chair and the superintendent, you all can add stuff, I'm good.
Okay. And, and, and Robert's rules and our board policy, I think, support that. But we, we can have a discussion further about that if, uh, if, if we need to.
Well, our board policy, in my opinion, does not support that, which would trump Robert's rules of order. But we can have a discussion another time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Where were we? Okay, we, we, okay, he, he, here, here is what it sounds like the majority of the people in here would like to do. We would like to remove that from the agenda and have a workshop sometime in the near future where we would, we would hammer out a policy that we would either pass or fail. That, that's what it sounds like. Is that? And, and, you know, I'm, I'm asking for input. Okay. I, I mean, that is the most logical thing. Quite honestly, what we did here tonight was very laborious and uncomfortable. I think it would have been a lot better in a workshop. So that's, that's what we'll do.
So just so that I make sure I understand, uh, Mr. Trap, you're asking for a board workshop to discuss release time?
Yes, that, that is correct. And, and I, I'm of the opinion we can remove it from the agenda for three weeks from now and sometime in the month of September. We had, a few weeks ago, we had asked board members when they would be available. So we will go ahead and, and go forward with that. And sometime before we do our board retreat, I think we'll have a evening workshop.
And as we prepare for the board workshop, board members are gonna review the policy from the School Board Association and provide their input. Because if the policy is coming from the district, we have a set procedure for policies, which would include taking it to various stakeholder groups, to include teacher stakeholder groups, parent stakeholder group, student stakeholder group, community stakeholder group. Uh, I'm quite sure I'm missing a few of those groups, but, um, that is my understanding that that is our way of work when we stat, when we create a policy that we bring to the board. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that because that timeline would then be extended beyond the three weeks if the district is creating the policy versus the board is taking a policy, making adjustments that the board would like to make and having a, a conversation around that.
All right. I, I am, I am of the opinion, and again, I would like some input on this. I'm of the opinion that the most successful thing we could do, or the most, I think, efficient thing we could do is to have the administration present something to us. That way it would give you, the administration, an opportunity to do just all the things you said. Because there is no reason to be in a tremendous hurry i- if we are moving. If we're moving on this, I don't see that it needs to be a hurry.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Mrs., Dr. Scott.
I'm just sitting here thinking, shouldn't we take a vote on whether we need to create a policy instead of taking time to create a policy if we don't have the support? Or am I looking at this blindly?
I, I'm of the opinion we don't need to take a vote to draft a policy. Uh, that's just my opinion, though.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I, I would like to say that I concur with Dr. Scott, that we need to take a vote on whether or not to draft a policy. I appreciate, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, with what Dr. Moore said, all the different people that are going to be involved if we ask administration, because I would like their input if the board wants this policy drafted. But if the board is not going to support the drafting of the policy, why would we, you know, again, take all of our administrative resources, um, and use their time when it could be used in, in different efforts?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Agostini. Uh, if I may answer that, board policy, uh, spells out very clearly how policies are formed and presented to the board. And one of the things that, that will spark the formation of a draft is community, uh, community suggestions. And I think we have had quite enough community suggestions in the last couple of board meetings to warrant, uh, the administration to draft a policy. So it, it isn't just the board's will. Policy comes from, uh, the School Board Association. You know, we've had, we've had several policies since I've been on the board that was presented to us by the School Board Association. And policy definitely, our policy says that policies can be, uh, generated, uh, because of public interest. And there's definitely enough interest here, in my opinion, to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Porter.
I think we're talking about two different votes. One vote is to vote on whether or not we even want to draft a policy. Then the second vote would be on the drafted policy. And if we have a workshop to create that policy in between the two, the thing is, is if we vote and, and the answer, and it fails, then there's no need for a workshop to be planned and a second vote. So we might want to, because of the, in, in this event, because of the amount of resources used and the amount of time used, I agree with, uh, Ms. Agostini in that we may need to hold a vote to even move forward if the board wants to move forward. I don't like the language of directing the staff. Um, I would rather take on that ourselves as the board.
Well, I think board policy is clear on it. If I had the book in front of me, I could bring it up. It, it says policy can be created and suggested by the community, even a single board member. And the administration can move forward on that. Does anybody have their policy books in front of them?
You know which policy it is?
I, I don't. I, I have it here in the 20 pages of notes I have.
Mr. Chair, but what you're saying is, oh, may I be recognized?
Oh, yes, yes, uh, Ms. Agostini.
Yes. You're saying that the community will draft the policy is what you're supporting.
No, ma'am. That isn't what I'm saying.
Okay, then I misunderstood.
No, it, it, board, board policy, it, it's in section B. It talks about how policy is created.
I'm familiar with the policy.
Okay.
And I'm looking for it right now.
Okay.
Chairman Trap?
Yes, ma'am.
It's policy BG, BGD, Board Policy Process, Board Review of Administrative Rules.
That's it. That is, that is it. I, I'm of the opinion that the community can, can, uh, initiate the administration to form a, to present a policy to the board. Regardless, this is after 10 o'clock.
When you're reading it, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
It says, "Proposals regarding policies may originate with a member of the board, the superintendent, a staff member, parent, legal guardian, student consultant, civil civic group, advisory committee, or any resident of the district. Proposals from external sources will be presented in writing and given to the superintendent for review."
That's correct.
Upon recommendation? Yeah. So if the community wants it, they can forward a proposal to the board.
I, I believe the community has spoken enough for us to. I believe the community wants us to move forward with this. And it doesn't say in that policy we have to vote on something for the administration to do it. That's the point I'm trying to make. I'm sure over the, I'm looking out over the audience. I'm sure someone out there would like to forward us a policy. Okay? For us to look at.
Well, no, not true. I mean, if you take a poll, but the night is long and perfect example. Here we are spending countless hours on this when we have safety issues. We have student academic achievement going on. We have tried to retain and recruit teachers and we're going into almost midnight hour with trying to talk about release time. This is ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am. We uh, according to board policy, a board member can present a policy to the administration to initiate them drafting a policy. So I'll take care of that. Is there any other discussion?
So for clarity, I just want to be sure we're leaving 8.1 on here?
We're gonna, we're gonna remove 8.1 for the moment, yeah.
They're just gonna have to.
And, and we, we will, we will work on drafting a policy.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and schedule a workshop. That's exactly right.
We already have a workshop, workshop scheduled for September 29th. So are we just adding that or we're adding an additional workshop to what we already have scheduled?
I don't see how we can accomplish what we want to at the scheduled board retreat if we try to squeeze this in. It was my intention to have a evening workshop where we would discuss just this. But. Any other questions about the agenda?
Yes, I just, um, Chairman Trap?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to get, uh, clarification. So we're gonna remove the item off of the agenda, but you're going to submit a request for the superintendent to begin drafting a policy?
Um, I am going to, yes, that's probably the easiest way to look at it.
Okay.
Any, any board member can submit a draft to the superintendent or a suggestion to start a draft according to board policy. So we will do that.
Now, will it be added to the next agenda?
Perhaps. We'll, we'll just wait, we'll wait, we'll wait and see. I, in, in my mind, I see the superintendent receiving a draft or some type of, uh, some type of, uh, information to start this ball rolling. And then once the administration has a draft to present to us, it'll be added back to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, wouldn't it be, um, from what I heard Dr. Moore say, if, if administration creates it, they'll have to go and seek all these different entities. Whereas if we just take the one that's already prepared from the South Carolina School Board Association, we can add this to the agenda, tweak it as we see fit and vote on it. If, or, and then if it fails, it fails. If it doesn't, that way we can honor Dr. Scott without having to add more time to focus on the same thing. This is the third week. We can get this done. And be, if, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Do the first reading, second reading, and be done with it.
Can I add something?
I think the best thing to do is remove it from the agenda right now. It has become an absolute source of nothing but contention. I'll be honest. This is something that shouldn't be the problem it is.
Ms. McFadden said to honor Dr. Scott, to honor me, is to have the village, parents, teachers, students, community members and these different groups. Because again, we talked about, you know, parents being a child's first teacher. And we talked about, we're here for parents and we hear from students. And we're all sitting here because we were elected by the parents. So to honor me would be to allow all of the different groups to have input in this, not for the chair to create something.
My mistake. I thought you just wanted to, to be done with it because we're spending too much time in it. So we'll be spending more time at the workshop and things. I thought that you just wanted it to, to not spend more time on it. So that's what I was trying to honor. So.
So that's what I was trying to honor, so excuse me for saying that, because that's not what I meant.
Right, I mean, spend more time tonight.
Okay, I understand.
But to honor, I think everyone needs to have input. Thank you.
All right, we know, we have no further public participation or executive session. I believe we are going to go to, yes, Board and Superintendent Comments. We will start with Mrs. Nash.
Well, I am actually in a hotel lobby for a work conference, so it's gotten kind of loud because I don't have the best of service, but just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It's been a very robust discussion, and I think one of the big things is that being on this board, I have tried to do is, I'm not gonna get on here and grandstand and, you know, pretend to be somebody that I'm not. So I've always been honest and true about that, and be quite frank, tonight's been somewhat of a disappointment. But I am thankful for everybody that spoke, and I don't mean that as far as the people that came and spoke. I'm thankful for every single one of them. But I'm gonna keep my comments short tonight, and we will pick up on a positive note at the next meeting. Thanks so much, have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. And Mrs. Washington.
Just want to say that we come together for the benefit of our students, and I'm definitely grateful for everybody's shared input. I want to say congratulations to our football teams that won their first football game, their football games this past Friday. Listen, y'all, those students do an amazing job. We have some great athletic programs, so kudos to all of the coaches. And I cannot decide what shirt I'm gonna wear when I go to a game, but hey, I will be cheering for all of you. Thank you all so much for showing up, and have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Dr. Scott.
Just a few things. One is, Dr. Moore did celebrate her birthday last week. I know she don't like being recognized, but you guys, when you see her, please tell her happy belated birthday. And also, we lost a gentle giant last week, Senator John Scott. So please continue to lift his family and his friends and his colleagues up in prayer, and we send our condolences to his family. And also, want to thank the representatives for being here this evening. I often think about Dr. Stephen Peters. He has a book that says, "Do you know enough about me to teach me?" I use that with my, my colleagues. Do you know enough about your legislators to have that conversation? You don't start the conversation when you need something. We talk about making deposits and withdrawals. If you only have $500 in the bank, you can't go and withdraw 800. So I will hope and pray that we begin to build relationships first with our legislators before we put them on blast and say, "Contact your legislators." Well, we have legislators here. Build those positive relationships first, then ask them to speak and be an advocate for you all. It's not hard to do. So I want to thank you guys for being here. And also, they do represent Representative Thigpen and Representative Annie McDaniel, the president and vice president of the South Carolina Black Caucus Association, so I do thank them for being here. And then Vanessa Frazier, she was sitting here earlier, but she's left. And I often think about a time when I worked at Ridgeview as a school administrator. We had a Christian group that we met after school. I was also a part of that group. So it is feasible to have this before school and after school. And we met monthly after school. I was a part of that group, and I was proud to be a part of that group. Because when a student saw me as a school administrator, part of that group, discipline decreased for me. I can't speak for other people, but they saw the love that I had for God, and they didn't judge me. I'm for that. So I want to say thank you for that. And also with Mrs. Frazier, who's also, she works in our school district as well. She wrote a book over 10 years ago, and I had a part of that, a chapter in that book, and the late Chip Jackson also had a chapter in that book, and it was called Dear God, Welcome Back to School. And I want to say that because I know we had this conversation before, but for those who went on social media, who came here and talked about all these great things that our kids were going to learn, and they were going to take it back to the school, but then they tried to shame us, some of us, on social media about not being Christians. And again, we don't have to prove ourselves to anyone. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you guys for hanging in. It's been a long night. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. And Mrs. McFadden.
So I want to say, it's been a great, robust conversation. You can tell where the passions are in our community, and that's a good thing, because we know what each other want, and so we have a feel for the future and the things that, that some of us may want or may not want, that kind of thing. But we have had a really good conversation over the past couple of meetings, and so I appreciate everyone's comments. So I want to say thank you to my board colleagues for voting for me for the board legislative contact. I appreciate that. Looking forward to continue working with those in legislation as much as I can. Also want to say for parents with this traffic situation, just be patient. You know, if you see someone trying to get out, making that left-hand turn, just slow down and do the fake stop lot, the fake stop sign. You go, they go, we go, and we just rotate it out, okay? Until we can get this situation resolved. Because as Mr. Thigpen said, this is coming from the federal level. It's not school board level, state level. This is federal level stuff that we have got to get through. So thank you so much for your patience so far. And I am a huge advocate for after-school programs and before-school programs. So everyone that come and said that this would be a great after-school program, great, I agree. Every school should literally have an after-school program. And I do know that there are some schools that are charging students, parents, $12, $15 when they're late picking them up and things like that. So yeah, there are no free after-school programs for our children. So if you can implement something after school, I know that there's fees for classrooms, I've seen them on the, on the list, but we can work that out. You know, if you have something, a program that you would like for our students, let us know so that we can grab these students, because every student needs an opportunity to have some kind of program after school and before school. And I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you all so much. It's getting late, I'm getting tired, I know you're tired. So we'll see you soon. And by the way, you know, pray for us, we're going down to Greenville to learn for more about laws and things like that, so that the traffic situation and those laws that we're working on right now will get real conversations and real answers to bring back to you guys. So thank you all so much, have a great evening.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Porter.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to our School of Law Conference this weekend. I think it will come in handy. I feel like I needed it a long time ago. Also, thank you again for Representative Thigpen and Representative McDaniel. You're always open yourself to be available to others, and I feel that even more now that you've stuck it out all through the night with us, so I appreciate you and your time. I wanted to just give a special recognition to Ashlyn Watkins of our Lady Gamecock. She visited our schools last week and had her first camp last weekend. So on Saturday was her first camp, that she provided and announced it at all of our, at some of our middle schools and elementary schools that she visited. And it was a great event. And then she turned around and took some of the funds that were, that were collected from the camp and went and offered a dunk, a three-point shot and dunk contest, and offered scholarships to the students who won and participated. So I thought that showed tremendous character, and I appreciate her for, for visiting our schools. And I'm gonna keep it short as well. Thank you all board members for your input tonight, and I am okay with our discussions that we had and our questions. I didn't think anything was wrong with it, but that's about it. So have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I wanted to start off by just thanking Mrs. Washington for providing us with Dr. Morgan tonight in her inspirational moment. She, she was phenomenal. What a great story. And as I'll keep it brief, I want to thank all of those that came out for public participation tonight. While they may not agree, I truly do appreciate everyone's interest in advocacy. I do believe that everybody has the best intentions in mind. And again, thank you all for those who came out to speak to us tonight. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Dr. Moore.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. So I always believe in closing our meetings with a lot of positive things that our students do and that what we're seeing in our schools. But before I do that, I do want to thank our representatives for coming, and I want to specifically say to Representative Thigpen, thank you for reaching out to me. I had the privilege of speaking at the National Honor Society induction ceremony last week at Spring Valley. And my pillar was leadership. And one of the things I told the students is, good leaders are accountable, they own their mistakes, and when they make a mistake, they should acknowledge that. So I want to go ahead and apologize to our legislators for not personally reaching out to you in reference to our traffic situation. Representative Thigpen called me, and I did not call him back because, understanding that pastors are preaching on Sunday, I wanted to be respectful of his time and give him that time that I know he would need to be prepared to deliver the word on Sunday. But he took time to call me back after I called him on Saturday, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much for doing that. And like I said, when we don't do something, we need to own that and accept it and ask for forgiveness. So thank you for doing that. Now, on to the great things that I have been seeing in our schools. So I want to begin my comments with some breaking news for you. Now, I know you're tired, but we're here for students, so let's perk up so we can learn about what's been going on with our students. Thank you for sitting up in your chairs, we appreciate it. So today, I was honored to be a part of the prize patrol that went to five of our schools to announce the 2023-2024 Honor Roll Teacher of the Year finalist. So our communication team was there to capture the big reveal, so we got a little short video we want you to see, because these are phenomenal educators who are making the magic happen every single day in the classroom for their students. So watch this video.
Oh, their business is here. I'm good. What are we doing? promo cookies. Look at us.
Wonderful size.
And bar. How many are she wants?
You have an eight plus.
Oh, wow. This is a profession that I love. I love it more than anything other than my family, and I can't imagine being anywhere but in.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
You are a high finalist.
Thank you.
You are a finalist.
Just a symbol of the hard work that we do as educators, as being a voice for, an advocate for all of our students and the faculty and staff everywhere. So I'm just so excited, and I'm definitely gonna do what I can and definitely model
She is a finalist on a five-course Teacher of the Year of different school districts.
what it's like to be an example.
Miss Rivera. There is Miss Rivera. Can you help identify that? Yeah. Thank you. I'm shocked. This is my passion. I love coming to the course like every day, and I'm super proud to receive this honor right now. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. So thank you for all of the amazing educators that we have in our district. So speaking of award-winning teachers, Lisa McDowell has been appointed to the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness. Lisa was the 2022-23 Blythewood Middle School Teacher of the Year, as well as a District Honor Roll Teacher of the Year. Lisa is another great example of how Richland two teachers are recognized statewide for their talent and leadership. Hang in there, I'm almost done. Remember, this is about students, and that's why we're here. So I want to finish by giving you a glimpse of our latest program that will create future-ready graduates for the jobs of today and tomorrow. Last week, Westwood High School, which I had the privilege to be at Friday night for the football game, and they celebrated my birthday on the field, which I really enjoyed with the students. They gave me a helmet. I offered to suit up, but they didn't need me because they won the game. But anyway, Westwood High School publicly debuted their brand-new cybersecurity program called Castle Shield. So I want to show you this short video. So let's take a look at this program, because we didn't know this.
Cybersecurity is the way we do the future, and our children having an opportunity to learn deeply and profoundly is a blessing to us. We really appreciate it. We love the opportunity for them to learn. I'm hoping to have 30 students in every class every year. So, and I take, I have about three classes, so 90 students a year.
It's amazing, you know, for the students, it gets them job-ready for the workforce, graduating high school. There's so many areas within cybersecurity itself.
How would your career trajectory have been different if you had this in high school?
Oh, man. I would have been, you know, 20 years ahead of the game. You know, this has really been a game changer.
The thing I like the most is securities plus certification. You're here for three years, you take the test, you get certified, you're automatically in the working workforce, versus going out and taking cybersecurity somewhere else, probably have to pay for the curriculum and everything like that. But that's what I love most about the program. The kids have fun, there are many opportunities out there for it. If you think about it, like you said earlier, very little people with skills for cybersecurity, a lot of jobs out there.
Entry level into the field, you can look anywhere, probably about 80 grand, you know, coming, you know, with skills coming out the door.
With a high school diploma and certification.
Certificate of employment certification, yes. And the skills that you'll learn from the sandbox environments that they'll be practicing with, the technology skills, the soft skills, you can be looking about 80 grand stepping into the door.
So I want you to think about that. Coming out of high school, a student with the credentials that they're gonna learn in the program at Westwood High School, $80,000 a year. When we say we are purpose-driven so that our students are future-ready, it is these types of programs that are going to help ensure that we are preparing the next generation of workers for our county and our state. So parents that are listening, listen closely. The Castle Shield program is filling up fast, so if you're interested, you need to reach out to the Westwood High School Guidance Team as soon as possible. So I know we're ready to go home, but I just want you to make sure that you leave here tonight, understanding, great things are happening in our district every single day because of the great teachers, staff members, administrators that we have in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I, I don't really think I have anything positive to say tonight, so I'm just gonna adjourn the, adjourn the meeting. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chairman Trapp?
Mrs. Washington?
I move that we adjourn the August 22nd, 2023 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, motion was made by Mrs. Washington, a second by the entire board? Let's do a hand vote and be done with it. All those in favor of leaving? Thank you, Dr. Moore. I don't really think I have anything positive to say tonight, so I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chairman Trapp?
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn the August 22nd, 2023 regular Board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, a second by the entire Board. Let's do a hand vote and be done with it. All those in favor of leaving? If there are two on the phone would like to say something, that's great. If not, we're adjourned.
Aye. I agree.
Seven yes, zero no. We're adjourned.